Good evening. Welcome to the January 21st, 2021 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. This meeting is being held via video conferencing in accordance with Governor Promos Order 202.1. And until all further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely. So we asked that the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. There are also options on the website for public comments and to pre-register to speak on public hearings. So please consider that for all future meetings. If you wish to join to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting. Please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the drop down on the left, and click on the live link at the top of the page. If you wish to be heard during a meeting but did not pre-register, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the drop down on the left, and you will find the information required to join the Zoom meeting. With that, I'd ask you that you join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will be starting this meeting with a public hearings. Although in this instance, actually, before the public hearings, we're going to be doing decisions. And then we'll do the public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will mute the speakers until it is their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find that you're having difficulties accessing the hearings, please visit the town clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. Also, there are a few public hearings that will not be heard tonight or adjourned. So please listen to hear when they will be rescheduled for. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until February 22nd, 2021. Those comments can be addressed to the board secretary Candace and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall. Additionally, in accordance with the governor's order, these hearings will be recorded and will be posted on the town's website. And with that, I wanted to ask if we have a motion, or I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Second.
Let's see. Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
He's muted.
Yeah, Jason, we can't hear you.
Hi.
Mr. De Sessa? Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. And with that, we will go on to adjournments.
Okay, we've got a couple of changes to tonight's agenda. Candace, I'm making these adjournments and withdrawals for holdover applications. Do I need to read the request of relief or just the homeowner and address?
I don't know.
Homeowner and address.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I am number seven. For the application of Edward Brody, 12 Old Quag Road in Riverside, tax map 901393, lot 47.2, has been withdrawn. Item number eight, Thomas R. Stikeke Living Trust, 1205 Majors Path in North Sea, tax map 9781, lot 20.1. Move to adjourn that to our July 1st, 2021 meeting.
You have a second.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. De Sessa?
Hi.
Chair votes aye.
Item number nine, Michael Esposito and Louis Esposito, 730 Flanders Road in Flanders, tax map 901432, lot 48, move to adjourn to March 18th, 2021.
Second. Just want to mention before I do the roll call that we had a, this was on for final the last time for tonight. But apparently, the agent for the applicant had a family emergency. And because of that, I would suggest that we make this the final. We'll give her one more appearance.
This is it?
So 3/18 final.
3/18 final.
Okay, all right. Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item number 10, Round Dune Inc., 101 Dune Road, East Quag, tax map 903852, lot 14, move to adjourned in March 18th, 2021.
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, on to our decision calendar, a couple of adjournments here.
Quick question, was that, is that from March 18th?
March 18th for Round Dune, yes.
Okay.
Okay, on the decision calendar, a couple of adjournments here. The following three applications, we're going to adjourn to our February 4th, 2021 meeting. Flying Point Sands LLC, tax map 901782, lot 14. Elizabeth Hazan, tax map 9692, lot 1.1. And David and Robin Santora, tax map 903594, lot 39.2. Move to adjourn all those to February 4th.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, move to adjourn the following two applications of John and Audrey Nguyen House, property, tax map 909336.1. And Michael Scarrola and Jacqueline Kress, 902612, I'm sorry, 902613, lot 10. Move to adjourn both of those to February 18th, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, before we go on to the agenda, we're going to be doing decisions first tonight. So I have a few of them, and I don't know who wants to go first. You want me to go first?
I'll go first, sure. I have a few, and we can go back and forth on them. So I have a determination, pull it up here so I can read it. In the matter of Ammons LLC, which is the applicant for a property at 28 Bayview Drive East in New York, Suffolk County, tax map 90926. Bruce Anderson, to paraphrase the application, Bruce Anderson appeared before the applicant. There's an existing single-family residence on this lot. They're proposing to demo and build a new single-family residence, which is requiring some rear yard setback from the street. This is a waterfront lot and some pyramid relief. They do have a conservation board permit. They have a Suffolk County Department of Health permit for a new IA system. They had a landscape plan, they had screening. Therefore, in the interest of justice and the reasons set forth herein, this board grants applicant relief from Section 33011 Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal rear yard setback of 25.3 feet where 30 feet is required, and relief from Code Section 33084D Pyramid Height for a total encroachment in the amount of 2,983.3 cubic feet, which is the total, 1,690 on the west side, 1293 on the east side, all for a proposed two-story dwelling that was last shown on a survey by William R. Simmons III, dated August 21st, 2019, and last revised May 20th of 2020, and revised architectural plans of Ryan T. Kestner, dated 12/5/19. And incorporated herein, the granting of this relief is conditioned on the applicant obtaining all other necessary permits for the building permit.
Second.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
I'm sorry, the name on this decision again?
Ammons, Ammons LLC is the applicant.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Chair votes aye.
I have one more, Mr. Grossman, unless you want to go?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I have a determination in the matter of Ben Carr Building Corp. For property located at 154 Head of Pond Road in Watermill, Suffolk County, tax map 90113-2-24.4. David Gil Martin Jr. appeared as attorney for the applicant seeking a determination that the lot is single and separate from the adjoining parcels pursuant to Section 330115D. Mr. Gil Martin offered testimony that the property has its own address, separate tax map number, tax bill. It is vacant land, and based on the aerials and the survey presented, has not been used in connection with any of the other adjoining properties, which are vacant and/or improved. There's no opposition to the application. Therefore, this board grants a determination that Suffolk County Tax Map 90113-2-24.4 is held in single and separate ownership, and is thus retitled to its relief. This relief is conditioned upon applicant obtaining all other requirements of the building department.
We have a second.
Thank you.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Does anybody else have any, or should I start reading?
Adam, Adam, one second. There's a, there's a question in the, in the chat from Kevin Gailster about Round Dune being adjourned. You know, he asks if, he asks if the public is, the board is taking any public comments, and the answer to that is no. Public comments will be received at the adjourned date, which was... This is adjourned date.
March 18th.
March 18th.
Right. But in the meantime, right, it's still open, so I mean, people can submit very often if they want to.
We can take written, yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay. So I have a few decisions to read. First, this decision on the application of Lee Stevenson and Gail Stevenson, Gail P. Stevenson. This is property located at Suffolk County Tax Map Number 90189117. This application is for property located at 11 Bayview Avenue in Antwerp. Applicant requests variances to construct a two-story addition to an exist, to a pre-existing dwelling. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed two-story addition to an existing dwelling. Town Code 330115C continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback of 13.5 feet where 14.7 feet is existing. Two, Town Code 33011 Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal total side yard setback of 28.2 feet where 35 feet is required. And three, Town Code 33084D Pyramid Height for an encroachment in the amount of 2,782.35 cubic feet. Structures as shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey Haderer, or Haderer, surveyor dated February 16th, 2019, last revised December 8th, 2020, and the plans repaired by architect Michael Lee Williams of Southport Design, R&amp;W Engineers, PC, dated September 24th, 2020, and Pyramid Sketch dated December 14th, 2020. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Um, Brian, the second decision you read was Ben Carr Building Corp?
That's correct.
Okay, I made a mistake. I'm recused on that application.
Oh, my apologies. Well, I can recast the vote on that, so let's, uh...
Vote on, please.
So we, eliminating that because we were out of order, sorry to, I should have noted that, Mr. Grossman. The decision, I would, I would remain the same. Is there a second from the board?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Chair votes aye, and Mr. Grossman recuses himself on that determination.
Okay, thank you. I had forgotten, as I was doing other things. Okay, next decision I have is the decision on the application of Eric Nguyen Dorf. This is for property located at tax number 90290212. This application is for property located at 8 Seashore Avenue in East Quag. Applicant seeks variances to construct a proposed 12 by 24 swimming pool. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to the applicant for a proposed swimming pool. 33011 Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from street setback of 17.5 feet where 50 feet is required. Two, Town Code 33076D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And Town Code 33083C, yards to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required front yard of the principal building, as shown, as shown on the survey prepared by William Harold Wright Jr. of Barrett, Bonacci, and Van Wheel, PC, dated August 25th, 2020, last revised December 18th, 2020. Granting of this relief is also subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, I have a decision on the matter of the application of JAV Properties Associates LP. This is for property located at tax number 90132227. This application is for property located at 299 County Road 39A, Southampton. Applicant seeks variances for proposed additions, parking, and setbacks for the transition side yard, transitional side yard, I think, in connection with an existing car dealership. This proposal is a type 1 action under SECRE, and after coordinating review, the Southampton Town Planning Board adopted a negative declaration finding that the proposed activities would not result in significant adverse environmental impacts. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants the following relief from the Town Code to the applicant. 330105K, schedules of minimum and maximum floor area to permit additions totaling 5,390 square feet. 1,451 square feet enclosure over roofed area, 2,678 square feet addition to the service room, and 1,261 square feet enclosure of roofed display area to an existing 17,444 square foot building where the maximum gross floor area per building or building complex in the highway business zoning district shall not exceed 15,000 square feet per lot. Two, Town Code 33083G1A, yards to permit a transitional rear yard of 10 feet where 50 feet is required to adjoining residential districts to permit the expansion of the existing vehicle storage area. And three, Town Code 330100D, exemptions and waivers of parking and truck loading space requirements as it relates to 33095, schedule of off-street parking space requirements for non-residential uses to allow 79 parking spaces where 97 parking spaces is required. These variances are, for structures as shown on the site plan prepared by Thomas D. Burke of Squires Holden Rising Bach and Smith Land Surveyors, PC, prepared April 18th, 2016, last revised March 18th, 2020, and the plans repaired by Gregory Besmagian of Besmagian Architects of PLLC, dated October 2nd, 2019. As agreed upon by the applicant, the structures may not be used for what is commonly known as a big box store. The grant of the foregoing relief is conditioned upon applicant obtaining all other necessary permits or approvals.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
Mr. Daly?
No.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And I have one more, and this is the decision on the application of Stephen Lankler. This is for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map Number 9034625. This application is for property located at 11 East Point Lane in Antwerp. Applicant seeks variances for a proposed porch addition to an existing dwelling. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from, to the applicant from Town Code 330115C continuance for a principal front yard setback of 45.8 feet where 49.7 feet is existing for a proposed porch addition to an existing dwelling, and from Town Code 33011 Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback from the Southernly Lot Line of 52.3 feet where 60 feet is required for additions to the dwelling. And all as shown on the survey prepared by David H. Fox Land Surveying, dated August 5th, 2019, last revised January 14th, 2021, and the plans repaired by Charles M. Thomas, Architect, dated November 11th, 2019. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Han?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. And also, before we get going to the public hearings, I just want to mention that Anthony Tress is here from the planning department, and so we're very happy to have him be able to participate in our meeting.
Thank you very much.
No problem at all. We look forward to your comments.
Thank you.
All right, item number one on the agenda. Michael and Jean Petrie, property located at 18 Middle Road in East Quag, tax map 902923, lot 13. Application request relief from, one, front covered porch, 330-11 Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 32.7 feet where 40 feet is required. Two, for a front entry vestibule, 330-11 for a principal front yard, principal front setback of 35.7 feet where 40 feet is required. And three, for proposed relocation of an existing shed, 330-76D, placement of accessory buildings, structures, and uses in all districts, and 330-83C, yards to allow the shed to be located within the minimum and total required side yard for the principal building on a non-conforming lot. In addition, to clarify the town records, variance relief for the existing bump out on the front of the dwelling east side is required from Town Code 330-11 for a principal front yard setback of 38.6 feet where 40 feet is required, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction? We have Daphne Vaughn for this?
Yes, good evening, Daphne De Sessa, sorry, and you can state your name and address to the record, please.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning, 225 Mont Hogue Highway, Mariches, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You can tell us about the application.
Yes, thank you. So we do have a revised survey, I guess I'll start with that. Dated January 14th, that was recently submitted. I'm not sure if that has been scanned for review. But I'll start by saying that the subject property is currently located in an R20 zoning district. It's also known as Lot 150 in Section 2 of the Tiana Shores subdivision. It is non-conforming to the zone at 15,400 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required. A single and separate search was conducted on the property, and it was submitted going back to the upzone of the property on May 22nd, 1972. And it does show up as single and separate to that date, which makes it eligible for the C zoning district. So the proposed project at this time is construction of an enclosed front vestibule and a covered stoop with an expanded roof overhang addition on the eastern or front side of the house. The proposed vestibule will be constructed within the area of an existing uncovered entry stoop with one step for egress, excuse me, from the structure, extending an additional three feet toward Middle Road with an extended roof overhang over it. So the vestibule itself is proposed at 35.7 feet from Middle Road with the covered entry stoop at 32.7 feet from the road where 40 feet is required. So that's necessitating variances from 330-11 in the amount of 4.3 feet for the vestibule and 7.3 feet for the roof overhang over the stoop. What's not cited in the building comments that I believe we also need a variance for is the, the roof overhang over the stoop is, not only needs a setback variance, but it should also, I believe, require variance from 33083C because it is a roof overhang extending beyond 18 inches, that's normally allowed. So I think we need a variance for 18 inches as well. I did apply for that in the application. The majority of the residence is located 40.8 feet from Middle Road, which is a conforming front yard setback. I did a lot of research of the property history with Dennis O'Rourke, the chief building inspector, which showed that there's a 14.9-foot area that bumped out from the rest of the house on the east side of the residence that is part of the original construction, and it contains a foundation that's setback at 38.6 feet from Middle Road. So Dennis had said that we should ask this board to clarify the record by seeking a variance for that original nonconformity in the amount of 1.4 feet from the required 40-foot setback. So lot, overall, will have a total, that's the correct survey, a total lot coverage of 13.9% where 20% is allowed. So I had a conversation with Candace and also received the building department comments on the application. And in response to those comments, we had Joe Secafigo of Colonial Surveying revise the survey that you see before you right now to show the correction of the rear yard to the 50-foot setback. I think we had it at 42 previously, but 50 feet is the C zoning rear yard. Also, there is a generator on the north side of the house that currently is less than 10 feet from the property line, so we're showing that that will be relocated to 10 feet in a conforming location. The shed that was cited in the initial, in the posting, I guess, in the paper, is, no longer needs a variance. We did have it in the side yard. We are relocating it out of the required side yard into that re-corner to a conforming location. So no variance is needed for that. We also had to recalculate the rear lot coverage on the survey because we had included the at-grade patio in our calculation, and I was advised that since it's 12 inches or less from grade, that it does not require to be a part of that calculation. So the rear lot coverage is 14.6%? Yes, where 20% is allowed, so there, no rear lot coverage variance is needed. We currently have a building permit application in that's under review by Sean McDermott for the proposed additions to the rear of the house that are in conforming locations. So no variance is needed for that. It is strictly for the proposed entry and vestibule on the Middle Road side, east side of the house.
Okay. Well, well, I guess my next question, Daphne, is have you had any communication with any of the neighbors?
Uh, no, I have not heard from anyone. I did receive all of the green cards back, so they all received the application.
Daphne, has the front porch already been constructed or started?
No. It's currently just an open stoop.
Are there other properties in the neighborhood that have, oh, front porches or vestibules on them? Is it a common amenity in the neighborhood?
Yes, it is a common amenity in the neighborhood. It's definitely not out of character with the neighborhood. This is really just a very small extension to just get them out of the element upon entering into the house.
I asked that question because Keith was not here to ask it himself.
Okay. I have to say, it's relatively modest relief, in my, in my view, but you know, we'll see if any of the neighbors are here. Any other questions, members of the board?
I have a question.
I'm sorry?
I have a question. Um, for the, um, because I didn't get to totally eyeball the new survey. For the 35.7 setback for the front, for the front entry vestibule, I didn't see, I didn't see that. Is it, I see like 34, 34.7?
It was, it was, it was missing. That's, that's why the revised survey has it.
Yeah.
Oh, got it.
The revised survey.
There, we're showing the 34.77 existing setback for the existing
Got it.
stoop, and then the 35.7 is the vestibule, and 32.7 is the roof overhang.
Got it. And then for the shed, Daphne, is, which, I, I don't understand the shed. On the other survey, it had, you know, shed to be relocated. Is, is that one shed, does that have a CO, or is that the one that's moving?
No, that's the one that's moving. He basically is showing that same dimension shed relocated to that back corner.
To the corner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and Daphne, you pretty much covered the building department comments, so I don't think I need to read them, and if you already got them, and... Yeah, and, and Daphne, you pretty much covered the building department comments. So, I don't think I need to read them. And if you already got them and revised the survey to address them, so.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Petrie? This is the property located at eighteen Middle Road in East Quogue. If you would like to be heard, this would be the time to raise your hand and let us know. So, we can, uh, put you on. Any hands, Shirley?
I see no hands.
No hands, okay. If not, criminalious, it's yours.
Move to close the public hearing, leaving open for written submissions only until February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, with a written decision on February fourth, two thousand twenty, uh, sorry, March fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Hahn.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mrs. Sessa.
Hi.
You're both aye. Thanks so much, Daphne. I don't know if you have more. I think you might.
I'm next. Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda, ninety-five Crescent LLC, property located at ninety-five Crescent Street, Neuyak, tax map nine hundred seventeen one lot five. Appicat request relief from town code three thirty dash seventy-six D placement accessory. Building structures and uses in all districts and three thirty dash eighty-three C yards to allow the proposed swimming pool and patio to be located within the minimum and to, total side yard. Of the principal building on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Okay, Daphne, state your name and address, please. Yeah.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning for the owner, ninety-five Crescent LLC, uh, surf, uh, sorry, I'm sorry. Two twenty-five Montauk Highway, Mariches, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Tell us about this application.
Okay, so this one, uh, we're proposing a sixteen by twenty-four, which is three hundred and eighty-four square foot in-ground swimming pool. With an associated five foot by twenty-four foot or twenty square foot. Pervious at-grade patio to be located on the east side of the existing single-family residence. Excuse me. This property is located in an R fifteen zoning district and is now conforming at ten thousand four hundred and eighty-seven point two square feet. It currently contains a two-story, single-family residence with a deck, a screened porch, and an associated waterside patio. And it benefits from a pre-existing certificate of occupancy from December thirteenth nineteen eighty-two. For a two-story, single-family dwelling with attached garage and front porch, as well as a certificate of compliance. From October twenty-seventh nineteen eighty-two, additional living area, second story and a one-car garage to the family dwelling. That were approved as part of a VDA decision, which is number sixty-two fifty-six. All of those were provided with our application. So, this property, as you can see, fronts on Upper Sag Harbor Cove and contains a functional timber bulkhead. Which acts as the wetland boundary for the parcel. So, this property is regulated by both the Town Conservation Board and the New York State DEC. And has received permits from both of those agencies also provided as part of our application. The proposed swimming pool and patio on the east side of the residence will be located in a, uh, well, it'll be in a conforming side yard setback at ten feet for the pool. From that easterly property line. But being that they're located partially within the required side yard of the residence. Will require, uh, variances from three thirty seventy-six D and eighty-three C of the town code. The pool and patio are both within that thirty-five total side yard setback to the residence. The patio will be at-grade. Uh, it has to be made of pervious material. So, it may just be gravel. It may not even be constructed at all. But, uh, the, uh, impervious lot coverage for the DEC required us to have it as a pervious structure. So, it's contained, the property is contained by the title wetlands. Located to the north of, on the north side of the property on Upper Sag Harbor Cove. The pool is cited at a maximized wetland setback. Which also accommodates a new, newly installed innovative alternative onsite wastewater treatment system. Which has been approved by the health department and required multiple variances from them for its installation. So, the, there really is nowhere else to place this pool. This is the best possible location on the property that achieves maximum wetland setbacks. Maximize separation distance to the new sanitary system and a conforming ten-foot side yard setback. We had to provide, as you can see on the survey, a twenty-five foot naturally vegetated wetlands, non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer as a condition. Of the town wetlands permit that is vegetated, uh, to date. We are, um. Otherwise, that's, that's really it. That's the whole project.
Okay. Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
Uh, have not.
And this property is, uh, significant, has significant challenges because of the wetlands.
Yes.
So, we, we, I think I, as board member, understand that. I think, uh, when we have these kinds of circumstances, we understand that. You know, sometimes in order to get accessory structures on the property, there needs to be relief. Okay, and it's not, it, it, it seems to be i- in the scheme of things relatively modest relief.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other questions, members of the board, or Katie?
Uh, no, I just wanted to say, I, you know, I, I just asked Candace if we made a referral to the con board. I see that you did get a permit just recently. Right? It looks like January sixth, twenty twenty. So, we just, we have to wait back from them. And I'm assuming it's just going to be consistent with the permit.
Yeah.
And a referral to the county and, um, the trustee too. So, that hopefully those will all come in within the thirty days.
Okay. Oh, I will also say that, uh, the patio, the wood deck and the sunroom are proposed to all be removed as part of the project. Basically in lieu of the swimming pool. And the sanitary system used to be basically within the pool location and part of the wetland buffer.
I see that inserted.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, um, is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of ninety-five Crescent LLC? This is the property located at ninety-five Crescent Street in Neuyak. If you would like to be heard, uh, please raise your hand to let us know. This would be the time.
I have one hand.
Okay.
You're on the way.
We can, we can see you. We just can't hear you. You have to un.
Hi.
Hello. I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
No, I'm not an attorney.
Not attorney, okay. So, you can just raise your right hand if you'd state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Hiroy Arts and I have the property to the west of the subject property at ninety-nine Crescent Street.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So, can you tell us about y- your comments about the application?
Just, I'm, I'm in favor. Uh, I did get a postcard from, uh, Daphne. Regarding his project and I reviewed it and I'm totally in support of the project. And that's basically it.
Okay, well, that's, uh, very nice of you to come in to tell, to join our meeting just to tell, tell us that. We don't get that very often. It's a very, uh, very unusual.
Hiroy, can you spell your last name for me?
A-R-Z-T.
Thank you.
Your work.
Okay, and then, anything, nothing else you wanted to tell us?
No, have a great day. Thanks, guys.
Okay, very good. You as well. Appreciate you joining us.
Bye-bye now.
Okay. Want to make sure there isn't anyone else waiting to be heard?
I see no other hands.
Okay, um, all right. Uh, and Jason, it's yours.
Do we need a new survey? Uh, Marjorie Riley's comments?
Okay, so I'm glad you mentioned that. So, um, Daphne, I don't know if you already addressed it, Marjorie, Marjorie Riley's comments. The certain, which are, the survey should be revised to indicate the setback from the proposed swimming pool to the northerly property line, Upper Sag Harbor Cove. And to the side yard setback to the proposed patio.
I do have those comments. I'm not sure really of the relevance of them. The, we're showing that it's more than forty feet from the bulkhead. I mean, we could add another arrow. And my concern is that then it, the survey just gets busier. That patio, as I said, is going to be gravel and will be at-grade. And I don't even think they're constructing it. It's basically, uh, Marty Shea actually asked us to show some kind of a patio, assuming that people would want that. But my client, you know, I think it's five feet or four feet, I'm sorry, four feet from that side lot line. If, so, it, you know, we can do that revision. I'm just not sure of what the relevance of that is.
Well, I think we can handle it one of two ways. You could either make the revision or we could adjourn this for all purposes and you can come back in a month and have an answer for us.
An, an answer for, what do you mean?
What the relevance is when you talk to the building department.
Oh. Well, I mean, I don't know. Okay, it's fine. We'll, we'll make the revision.
Sounds like the course of least resistance. We like it.
Good idea.
Because every surveyor is so busy now. It's so hard to get attention of them. And it's such a minor thing, but, you know, we.
But we want, we want to keep the building department happy. I mean, if it didn't come, if the issue didn't come up here, it probably would have come up down the road shortly with, with the building department, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay, so, uh, Jason, it is yours.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions to February twenty-second. The submissions will include the revised survey, uh, referrals from the conservation board, county and, uh, county trustees, and a decision on March fourth.
Second. Mr. Hahn.
Hi.
Mrs. Sessa.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
You're both aye.
Thank you.
All right, Daphne?
That's it.
That's it, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care.
Bye.
Item number three on the agenda, uh, NYCELEX, Real Estate Holdings Development Corp., property located at three seventy-six Main Street, Eastport, tax map nine hundred three forty-nine two lot twenty-four. Appicat requests the following relief for proposed two-lot subdivision of a non-conforming lot. One, for proposed lot A, three thirty dash eleven residential districts table of dimensional regulations for a lot area of fifteen thousand five eighty-eight point nine seven square feet where twenty thousand square feet is required. Two, a lot width of eighty feet plus or minus where one hundred and twenty feet is required. And three, a total lot coverage of thirty-nine percent where a maximum of twenty percent is permitted. And three thirty dash seventy-seven D placement of accessory building structures and uses in residence districts. For a rear yard coverage of twenty-three percent where a maximum of twenty percent is permitted. And two, for proposed lot B, three thirty dash eleven, for a lot area of fifteen thousand five seventy-four point six zero square feet where twenty thousand square feet is required. Two, a lot width of fifty feet where a hundred and twenty feet is required. And three, a principal minimum side yard setback of fifteen feet where twenty feet is required. And three. That's three. Again, it's four, a principal rear yard setback of twenty-five feet where sixty feet is required and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction and we're looking for Jason Allen from the, uh, Building Permits Plus. I think that's who we thought was Candace the first time.
Okay. All right.
Are you there?
Yes, sorry. Put your video on. There you go.
Okay, there we are.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Okay, so whoever's going to give the testimony, I just have to swear you in. I don't know if it's going to be one of you or both of you.
Both.
Both of you, okay. So, if you're going to state your names and act, unless you're an attorney, unless you're attorneys, I should say. If not, you state your names and addresses, please.
Uh, Sherry Hillenberg, nineteen Stillwood Road, Brookhaven, New York.
Jason Allen, nineteen Stillwood Road, Brookhaven, New York.
And applicant.
Okay, and do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead, Megan.
Okay, all right. Can you tell us about the application?
Sorry, Adam, before you start, Sherry, can you just say your first name was Sherry?
Yes.
And your last name?
Hillenberg, H-I-L-L-E-N-B-E-R-G.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're here tonight requesting a subdivision of a parcel known as three seventy-six Main Street, Eastport. Into two parcels, approximately a little over fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty square feet. Uh, one is a little bit larger than the other. And to construct an affordable housing unit on lot B and to convert the existing two-family home on lot A back to a single-family home. The detached garage and one shed is to remain. One shed will be removed from lot A. On February twelfth, two thousand nineteen, we met with Diane Weir and Jaclyn Fendlin to discuss this project. They were in agreement. They, you know, looking for more affordable housing and. We'll be installing two IA systems, one for the original house, one for the new house. And if Candace is there, if she can show the elevations that I have sent.
This is the, uh, front view of the house.
Uh, it's a typical cape, um, based on Southampton's guidelines. Small cape with a porch, three bedrooms total, one on the first floor as requested, two bedrooms and a bath on the second floor. A side entry on the south side and a full basement to allow for storage to eliminate the use of sheds and stuff on the property. Uh, approximately fourteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet total for the residence. Uh, we've already received pre-planning approval on this pro, project. And can I have some of the photos that I sent in?
Let me just explain some of the items. The photos that we did, we took pictures in the neighborhood to show that the house conforms to how neighborhood, it was very mixed. Houses and smaller houses and, um.
Larger lots, smaller lots.
A lot of, a lot of smaller lots, a lot of larger lots. And there are four other pictures of this. This house will be, even though it's affordable. Uh, the Affordable Housing Program calls for cedar siding, architectural shingles on the roof. Uh, and a, uh, exorbitant amount of insulation in order to keep the, uh, the heat in and the cold out and vice versa for the summer. If the board has, I'd also like to make one comment that, uh, through a certain, um, little problem with, uh, we didn't get the, uh.
Oh, that's right. We, um, we unfortunately on, we just got the comments from the building department on the nineteenth. So, there are some revisions that they're requesting to the survey regarding lot coverage, which, um, we didn't know we had to have done. So, that can be done, no problem. And, uh, now they're requesting a pyramid drawing, which we didn't understand exactly how that gets done, but they sent some instructions. So, we'll be more than happy to comply to that.
Okay, so you already have the building department, uh, comments because I can read them.
On the nineteenth, so they weren't included with the first packet that we had gotten.
Yep, I understand.
They're never included.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so.
I, I have a couple of questions. When, when you were talking about the affordable housing, is that going to be, does that on lot A or B?
Lot B.
Lot B, and is that, how is that, like, how is that preserved? Is it coveted or?
Whatever the board requests. We can file covenants on that without any trouble.
No, I just wondered when, when you spoke with Diane, like, you know, I, I just wonder how they.
She said to, once we're ready to let her, she, they have a list of people that are waiting for these houses, so.
But we can, we can file covenants if she wants us to. She, that never came up at the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, like, I just wondered what her practice was. I'm not familiar with it either. I'll find out.
I could actually answer that question if you'd like. As part of the subdivision approval, uh, there will be, uh, a affordable housing covenant that is filed, uh, that. That, that puts the property in affordability in perpetuity, subject to the town's affordable housing program.
Yeah, we do. We file a lot of properties. We get the. We have filed covenants on.
Okay, and my, my other question was, you said, um, for the, the house that's on lot A, that's going to be converted back to a single family dwelling? Yes?
Yes, that's as per their request, so.
Okay, as per the planning board, Anthony, or as per Diana, or?
Well, I believe there's a, there's an exist, there was a pre-existing CO for a two-family residence there. And I believe in the discussions with the town. You know, it was, we, we agreed that we would support, you know, the second lot. But in order, you know, not to increase density to eliminate the one unit on, on the two-family home.
Correct.
Okay, so, so we, so this board can condition, you know, add that as its condition.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I just had a couple of comments. The first thing is, I, I, I think the affordable housing. Program in the town is very important and I certainly want us to see. Properties utilized for that purpose is very, very important. It's a big issue in our community. Secondly, I just want to mention, been looking at the aerial of the immediate vicinity. It appears to me, and I, and this is part of what I look at when I, when we have applications that involve subdivision, require variance relief. But it appears to me that it's very similar in terms of what was being proposed in terms of the size of the two lots. That are being proposed to some of the other adjacent lots, not all of them, but some of them. So to the east. The ones that are right, right adjacent to the east, they're, you know, similar in size to what's being proposed and two lots over to the west. As well, similar to what's being proposed. And then when you go further, I think, you know, well, to, to the north of it, it's a very small lot and as an east is, or a couple of small lots. So. What is being proposed in my view is not out of character of what's, of what, what is in the surroundings. So I just want to mention that as well.
There's also several lots in the area that have multiple houses on them as well, so.
Yep, but sometimes they're pre-existing non-conforming.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But mainly, you know, this is when, when we have, you know, applications or subdivision. We're dealing with the variance aspect of the application and the planning boards dealing with the actual subdivision. But we're both playing a role, so I, in getting, having the process move forward, so I feel. With subdivision applications, I want to see what, what we're, what we're looking at in terms of the community, in terms of the adjacent properties and their size versus what's being proposed. So, okay, so those are my comments. Let me see. I had another question. Driveways. I have a note, three driveways on parcel A.
What?
Three driveway. No, there'll only be one driveway.
Only one driveway. Okay. Okay, I just, I was confused because.
All the way back to the garage.
I, I understand. I think it was multiple surveys got me a little bit confused as to which driveways for which.
And I want you to put a lot of, a lot of different details on them. It looks.
Yeah, okay. Okay, as long as you don't need relief for, you know, extra driveways. That's why I brought it up. Okay. Any other questions to members of the board?
We don't know.
Mr. Daley, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Jason. I, I, I'm noting that on this comments page on the. It says continued on next page and I don't have a copy of that next page. I just want to make sure that those who need it do have it.
Yeah, I actually asked Candace to circulate it to the boards. We did, it was sent, the, the missing second half of that page was sent by email to all of us.
Oh, right, right.
Well, that actually gives the instructions on calculating the pyramid. Configuration that they want.
Okay, and then my other comment is, I just, you know, I, I'm not sure who drove the decision to eliminate the two-family house, but. Reality is we don't have a net increase of affordable housing. We have going from one two-family house to two single-family houses. I, you know, I just. We, we need more houses that are affordable, not just more affordable housing, you know, so. But that's the recommendation that was made and I understand that. That's just my own personal comment.
Well, you know, we had a meeting, I think it was with Anthony. And that was discussed. If they want to leave it as a two-family, we would get an extra family out of it. Especially now with all the extra traffic and all the extra people that are going to be needed to, to back up the east end. It might be a good idea to rethink that.
But that, that property, you said, is not the affordable lot. It's the other one, right?
The other one is the affordable lot, but if you wanted to gain an additional rental or unit for a family. Apartments are another way of doing it and we wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, I defer to the planning board, but I. I think the hope is to move from a nonconforming use. A two-family dwelling is a nonconforming use.
That's correct.
So unless that's coveted and, you know, dedicated to the affordable housing, it's a nonconforming use. You could have three, you know. Three rental, you know, three, three dwellings on two lots, which the town typically moves away from.
Well, that would be up to them if they wanted, if, if they want the extra family to be living there, you know, it might give somebody a town.
Yeah, because.
Place to move.
Yeah.
Because by their nature, two-family homes, apartments in two-family homes are more affordable than single-family. But my understanding was that, that it was a density issue. Is that right? From the planning board that they suggested that it be turned into a single-family. We'll just leave it at that. I just was making that comment. However, you know, you've put a lot of work into this already, so I don't want to slow you down, but. That was just a comment.
Okay, Jason, you had a comment?
I was just reading the comments. Do we think this is going to need pyramid relief or?
Okay, maybe I could ask that, answer that question. We did a consult with a former permits examiner and plans examiner that had worked for the town of Southampton. Now works for the town of Brookhaven. And the way she explained it to us, we didn't need it. That's why we didn't prepare, prepare for that.
So I guess you're just going to have to verify and let's hope, you know, we can get this through. I love the project.
Yeah, I mean, if it turns, if it turns out that that pyramid relief is needed, if it's a relatively modest amount, we can, we could include it under any other league necessary. If that's what the situation is. On the other hand, if it's a significant amount of pyramid relief, then. I'm, I, I would recommend that we reopen.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we can do that. We, we planned on doing that anyway, so.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Is there anyone from the public? I see there was, there's one, one person here who'd like to be heard in connection with the application. Niselex Real Estate Holding, Holdings Development Corp., this is for three seventy six Main Street in Eastport, New York. If there is anyone who's wanting to be heard on Zoom, if you can raise your hand to let us know, that would be very much appreciated. And I know we have, uh, uh, folks here who are waiting to be heard. So we just need you to unmute yourselves.
Hello.
Okay, good evening. So I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
I am not.
Okay, so you can state your name and address, please.
Chaz Howell, seven Ketchum Avenue, Eastport, New York. And I'm here with my neighbor Catherine McNeil. We're trying to socially distance.
Okay, Catherine, you want to state your name and address as well?
Catherine McNeil, six Ketchum Avenue, Eastport, New York.
Okay, and you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
You bet, yes.
I do.
Okay, so you can tell us your comments.
Adam, I just want to get the correct stolen of Catherine's name. Your first name, Catherine?
K A T H R Y N.
Okay, and your last name?
McNeil, M C N E I L.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be all right if I started?
Whoever would like to start.
I'd like to start, so I just want to make a few points tonight. They're very succinct and I, I think they're well worthy of your thoughtful consideration. And I just want to make sure with the, the fervor and the zeal we have for affordable housing on Long Island, we're not overlooking the, the sort of basic facts of, of this application. So I believe that this is an impactful various requests to the bylaws of the town code. And in my view, variances are designed for relief for elements imposed upon a homeowner. And this is entirely. Self-imposed by a for-profit corporation upon us as residents. And I, further, the, the larger big point I'm going to make is about precedent set on the poles of flagpole lots. Because if this is allowed to go through with this kind of setback relief, the rear setback, for example, of twenty-five feet where sixty feet is required. Nearly abuts the Casparian barn, which is directly behind my property. Fifteen feet where twenty feet is required is next to my property. But I really, I'm hearing some of the comments tonight on different applications, three feet here, six feet there. A fifty-foot lot width where a hundred and twenty-five feet is required. So I, I just, I just want to address within that, started discussing it, so there's a subpoint. And now I understand why this wasn't included in the application. There's one more piece here that's conspicuously absent from the application. And that's the existing house, that's lot A under the question here, that was built prior to the initial town zoning. And therefore, if it is to change its status, the CO would change its status as it would render that dwelling less conforming. You, if it, if it's a two-family home, it sounds like it's changing to a one-family home and that's different. If it stays a two family, family home. It would have to be on a lot one and a, one and a half times the zoning, which would be thirty thousand square feet. And here, the proposal is to divide that piece of property into less than half of that. So the next piece I'll get into, I'm going through this very quickly, is with the application before you. I believe the answers to questions fifteen, seventeen, and nineteen are false. Question fifteen, will the grant of variances cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or will it create a detriment to the nearby properties? The applicant answered no. This, in my view, is false. I looked at what they're trying to wedge into this tiny strip of land between me and the Rayner's Garage and the Casparian Home. The driveway is so narrow, I don't see how you could even park more than one car in there. So it's affordable housing, right? We, we've all just heard that. So we're going to have a working family in there, probably multiple cars, because multiple people have to work. It's affordable housing. Where would they park in the street? So this, this is, this is an important point. I want to explain something to, to everyone here. We have the chief of rescue for the West Hampton War Memorial Ambulance on the end of our street. No one parks on the street unless they absolutely have to, to keep it clear for him. And he serves from Eastport, which we're at the line, all the way to the village line of West Hampton Beach. So, you know, Ketchum Avenue, the street in question for lot B, this is affordable housing. The street is so narrow, two cars can't even pass each other. So I worry very much about that kind of impact. Question seventeen, will the variances sought be substantial and if not, why not? The applicant answered no. This, in my view, is also false. I've just stated the variance request. The overreach in the request is, is obvious to me. It's obvious to our neighbors, some of whom couldn't be here because this is a Zoom meeting. And it has significant impact on the street and the neighborhood. Question nineteen. What reasons lead you to the request of this variance rather than the town, in accordance with the town code? The applicant answered that they were looking to comply with the town's affordable housing project. So here we are, and this really is the crux of the issue. Do we just take the town code and throw it out because this is affordable housing? I keep hearing the word and I, I've met the folks working for the permitting group a couple of times, once the pre-application meeting. We've had very friendly discussions that the property is going to be tasteful. I have no doubt. But it's not on a conforming lot. And so, you know, this word tasteful kind seems to be hiding a whole lot of manner of sin. And I want to think about, it's like, we've got affordable housing. Do we care so little about the people who would go in this house? That they're abutting a barn right behind them, they've got a mechanic shop next to them with cars and car parts. And then they're right next to me with a single driveway that goes in a lot that's only fifty feet wide. To me, it's like, don't people deserve better? We've got Tucko Commons, Speon Commons that have built, been built in a very, very well-planned and tasteful manner. I agree with what the gentleman said before about, we're not really having a net positive gain here with this one house. If this gets pushed through, if you live next to a flagpole lot and you're not lucky enough to be in one of the incorporated villages like West Hampton Beach or Sagaponak. Beware. I mean, this is, this is what could happen to you if you live next to the pole of a flagpole lot because it's affordable housing and it gets pushed through.
Um, Chaz, where, where is your, where is your lot compared with the, the property? Where do you live?
Just to the north, Mr. Grossman.
You know, okay, yes, sir. So you're significantly impacted.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and I, I remember hearing this term nimby not in my backyard, like. I believe that this doesn't even apply for that kind of acronym. This is really up inside our yards. So if you look to where north fifty-seven thirty twenty west is, there's a truck parked there for Rayner's Garage. My, my driveway is sandwiching in between this driveway. The parcel makes no sense whatsoever for the street. So the house may conform, but the piece of land, you could lie, I'm six foot four, you could lie three of me down in front of it, would fill the entire space. So I, I just want to leave one piece on this because, you know, we live in Southampton, thank goodness. We've got thoughtful deliberate, deliberate boards. Who look at these things. You know, when someone builds a pool house piece and put a bathroom in it and they do it without permission, you guys stop them from doing it. This is the equivalent of twenty-five pool houses right next to each other, sandwiched in between these houses. And I just implore you to do the right thing here and kill this on the vine. And there's, I'm just going to, I mean, done in a moment. This is my last point. It's a really sad irony that, about this particular application, because what it's doing in a really perverse way is hurting the actual people who it's meant to, to, to help. Because the town code for affordable housing is here to help. Number one, the aforementioned EMS chief who works for the town, Tick, lives on Ketchum Avenue. Town employee lives on the street across from me, Tick. More than one armed forces veteran lives on the street. Tick, tick. We did it. We already have this on this street in conforming lots. And so I just, I just leave my trust with this board and ask you to do the right thing here. I know you will. I thank you for that. I thank you for your time and for listening. The neighborhood is, is not very pleased with this particular application. On a conforming lot, I think we would all feel differently. The house does look nice. So I, I leave that with you and I thank you so much for your time and for listening.
Your comments. Okay.
Uh, me, Kate. Just the fact that they're not conforming to what the zoning is. I mean, why should there be an exception to the rule? And when I just heard the fact that you said no, that it does not impact the neighbors, I think is what it was, the meaning of it. Nobody asked me if it's going to impact me. I feel it is going to impact me. There, there's enough, this street is so small as it is to have more traffic. And more cars. It's just not that safe to have more cars up and down the street. And, and again, really, I go back to, they're not conforming to the zoning. I mean, I've been here all my life and have paid the taxes and have conformed and, you know, and they want something. But I can't have it because, you know, it doesn't conform to what it's been zoned for. And I think we just all need to comply with that. I mean, I can appreciate affordable housing.
Yeah, I have, I'm, I'm, I'm meeting. I'm not available. Okay, bye.
Bye. I, I can appreciate the need for affordable housing, but I just think it needs to go into areas that are zoned that, for that. That comply with what is set up by the town. And that's really it for me.
Okay, appreciate your comments.
Not, not happy.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone else who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Niselex Real Estate Holdings Development Corp.? This is for three seventy six Main Street in, in Eastport.
I have no other hands.
Okay, I had actually wanted, wanted to ask something, which was, I think there was an error on the surveys with the lot coverage. I'm not sure. We have lot par, I don't know if all the structures that are listed on there are, are part of it that, so maybe you can tell me a little bit about how the lot coverage is calculated.
Okay, um, go ahead, you can take that.
Well, that was actually one of the comments from the building department that.
Right, right.
The surveyor originally added driveways and walkways and everything as lot coverage.
Right, so that's, so the lot coverage has got to be.
One of the things he wanted. One of the things he wanted adjusted on the survey, to remove that as part of the lot coverage.
Yes, okay. Do we know currently what the correct lot coverage figures are?
Over 20%.
By how much?
I don't know, but we're, we're within the code.
No, 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 no.
It's gotta be below 20%.
Well, currently, currently with all, with the driveway and the walkways and everything, Lot A is 39%.
That's correct. That figure's gotta be wrong.
Yeah.
Yep.
Way, way wrong.
So we're going to redo that. We can, yeah.
Yeah, that was one of the comments from the building department. I have a comment on, okay, I know they had a concern about, like, parking on the street and everything. First of all, the house is going to have an 86-foot-long driveway, so I don't foresee anybody being, having to park on the roadway. And this house is the closest house towards Montauk Highway. So when you're discussing additional traffic coming up and down the road, it's not traffic that has to go past everyone else's house to get to this house, this is the first house on the road. So people will pull into this house and pull out to go back to Montauk Highway, they won't be going past other houses on the street.
That's false. That is.
No, no, no. We will give you an opportunity to speak, one, one person at a time, okay? Not happening. All right. So another thing I want to mention is, we have two very upset neighbors, and perhaps other neighbors who weren't able to appear tonight, who have significant concerns. My next question is, would you be willing to have a conversation with the neighbors to see if there's any way, other than denial of the variance, that their concerns could be addressed in some fashion, such as with screening, such as changing what's going where?
Yes, we would do that.
Well, we, but yeah, I mean, if they want fencing put up or something like that, that's not a problem. You know, landscaping, I mean, the house will be landscaped, but if they want fencing put up to separate their house from this house, that's not a concern at all. I'm sure the homeowner, the owner was planning on that to start with.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't know whether, all of their concerns can be addressed. I think maybe they just prefer that we deny the application, I get that sense.
I understand.
But, but I, you know, all I can really do is encourage that a conversation be had. I don't know that it can, there can be a.
I talked to this gentleman, okay? And, you know, he understands what's going on. The driveway is going to be a long driveway. The day that I, the two days that I was there, the auto repair had cars parked in the road. So that would be one thing that would have to be addressed. The auto repair has plenty of room, he had his trailer for years on this property, he's since moved it. There is a fence on this property that belongs to this neighbor, I guess that'll have to be moved, so that'll be an impact. And I think he uses part of that property as his backyard, is that correct or am I incorrect? Well, we can, but we will, we will.
It sounds like, it sounds like you guys need an adjournment to talk to the neighbor and work this out, unfortunately, we can't debate some of these things. So my suggestion as one member would be that we're going to adjourn this, and you guys can have an opportunity to talk, and that's either going to be fruitful or not, and then you can report back to us.
I would like to say at this public meeting, and since they live in the neighborhood, that they should send us, you know, I can give them my phone number, I think they have it on the, on that, they could call me, set up a meeting, and I'll be more than happy to be there.
Okay.
Okay, sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll give you time to also address all the building department comments, and some corrections on the, on the, the survey and things like that.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm getting the sense from the neighbors that they're willing, the two of you, that you're willing to have that conversation as well?
If they want us to move the house or do whatever they think is best, you know, for the thing, but.
Just asking the neighbors, hold on a second. So are you guys okay with having a conversation with the, with the applicant?
Absolutely. I've spoken to Mr. Allen before, we've had very cordial conversations, and I would be willing to make a phone call and to set up the meeting, absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, look, if there are things that can be worked out that can make this so unhappy, that's something I would really like to see take place. Because obviously, you're both very unhappy right now. I don't know whether, whether any, you know, anything that can be proposed is completely going to alleviate your concerns, but I'm hoping that it might at least help to have that conversation, see what, what might be possible to make your concerns, have your concerns addressed.
I appreciate the suggestion, and I agree 100%, Mr. Grossman.
Okay. Okay, so the next question is, when we're going to come back, and I will tell you, our next meeting is not an option, our next meeting is full.
I don't want the next meeting, we don't want, oh, March? March is the next meeting?
No, 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 can we do.
Can we do it in March?
You can do it in March, we have.
March 4th, how about March 4th?
March 4th.
If that's okay with them.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Before we do that, I just want to make absolutely sure there isn't anyone else who's waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with this application. Nicelex Real Estate Holdings Development Corp., 376 Main Street in Eastport.
No hands.
No hands, okay, very good. Okay, Cornelius, it's yours.
I'll move to hold over this application for all purposes until our March 4th meeting, when you guys will come back.
Okay, we have a second. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. DeSessa.
Hi.
Sure votes aye. Thank you all for your comments this evening, and look forward to seeing you on March 4th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night.
Thanks very much. Very much.
Okay, item number four on the agenda, Robert Crabbe, 9 East Shore Drive in North Sea, tax map 931, one lot 36, applicant is requesting relief from the following provisions of the town code for proposed three-story dwelling, 330-84D pyramid height for an encroachment in the amount of 967.2 feet, cubic feet, west side left, plus 1,117.7 feet, cubic feet, east side right, 330-11 residential district table of dimensional regulations to allow the height of the proposed dwelling to be 38 feet, five and a half inches, where maximum of 32 feet is permitted, and to allow the proposed dwelling to be three stories, where maximum of two stories is permitted, and any other relief necessary.
What is jurisdiction?
Good evening, Susanna.
Hello, good evening.
Does that swear to end? State your name and address, please.
Susanna Herman &amp; Consultants, 1390 North Sea Road, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Tell us about the application.
Okay, so can I go ahead and share my screen?
Sure.
All right, so we'll start with the survey, can you guys see that?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay. This is the application for 9 East Shore Road. The property is 26,618 square feet in an R15 zoning district. It's bound on the north by Little Pecan Bay, and on the south by Fresh Pond. So there are wetlands on both the north and the south side of the property. And there's an existing house at the site, which I have some photographs of. This is the existing house. And an aerial view, this is from a couple years ago, when the house next door was under construction. But you can see from this photograph that the existing house, which is about 1,400 square feet, sits precariously close to the bay, to Pecan Bay. Mr. Crabbe has owned the property for the last 14 years, during which he has witnessed more nor'easters than he would like to have seen. The current situation is that we are in the process of doing an erosion control project. This area here along Little Pecan Bay had become extremely eroded. This was the situation, this is about 10 feet or less from the existing house. The property is, is not, or, I shouldn't say the property, the building envelope is not in a flood zone, it's in an X-zone, but the velocity zone, you can see the line, is right here. So the existing house is about 10 feet from the velocity zone. Obviously, we've gone through the conservation board process, the proposed new house would be about 25 feet from the velocity zone. So we are asking for pyramid relief and height relief. The, this is a, the pyramid drawing here. If the house were constructed at grade, as would be allowable by town code and FEMA code, we would not be requiring pyramid or height relief. It would be completely conforming with respect to pyramid and with respect to total height. In 2018, we submitted a conservation board application to remove the existing one-story structure and construct a new two-story home at grade, not based on pilings, on a traditional foundation. And it was about 1,000 square feet larger footprint than what we're showing now. And as part of that application process, we received a preliminary advisory report, report from the town chief environmental analyst. Marty Shay provided, and I'll provide a copy of this, because he put a very detailed analysis together, which points out the fact that this is an area that's very subject to flooding. In fact, it's very, very surprising to me and to the homeowner, having been there and witnessed the storm activity that's taken place at the site, that it's not in a flood zone. So as part of that conservation board process, you received a report which talks about the risks of storm surges across the barrier. The, the width of the land is only about 200 feet from bay to Fresh Pond. He points out that new houses upon construction along the narrow parts of Fresh Pond Barrier need to be elevated on open pilings. He goes on to make his recommendations to say that the new house needs to be built on open elevated pilings to secure the house from future storm damage. And the buffers need to be maximized, and he recommended that we revegetate the entire property with native vegetation. So after receipt of this report, the homeowner and I, as well as the architect, met at the site with Marty Shay and reviewed all of our options. It was a very productive but very long process. And what we ended up doing is reducing the size of the house multiple times, until we came up with this proposed layout. It's a very narrow house from front to back, because obviously, you have to maintain the wetland setbacks or maximize the wetland setbacks from both the bay and the Fresh Pond side. So the proposed house is 100 feet from Fresh Pond and 75 feet from the high water mark of Pecan Bay. But as I mentioned, it's only, this is a lot, this is a beach area here, the velocity zone starts here, so we're only about 25 feet from the point where that, the, there's a little bluff that drops off there, that, that I showed in that photograph from here. So as a result of, I'll just go through a couple photos since I have them up. This is a flooding event, this is East Shore Road here, during a high tide storm event, where you can see the, the road is flooded, this is Fresh Pond in the background here. This is a side view, this is several years ago, I think that's 2015, before some of the, the nor'easters have taken place. This is, this escarpment here is now only about 10 feet from the existing house. So as a result of those meetings, we agreed, the homeowner agreed after many consultations with his architect and with Marty Shay, that the house would be on pilings. And so in order to maximize the well and setbacks and get up above the grade and out of the risk of flooding, a more narrow house was proposed, which is longer. The, because the entire property would be revegetated with native vegetation, I don't know if you can see, the entire property is sort of crosshatched that way. There's no location to put a swimming pool or a barbecue or Shay's lounges for lounging and sunbathing, so there's a rooftop deck that's proposed in order to keep all the human activity off of the, the area that's susceptible to erosion and which would be native revegetation. the, there's a, the architect's rendering of the, the street side of the house. The reason that we require a, a third-story variance is because of the, the bulkhead for access to the, to the roof deck. It's a little bit larger than what the building department would usually consider a bulkhead for access, which would be exempt from the height requirements. However, this area is 226 square feet, so it's, it's not a large area, it includes the elevator access stairs, as well as a small amount of storage and a mechanical room. The reason for the need for the additional mechanical room is that because we can't put things on the ground or out in the yard due to the fact that we've agreed to revegetate the whole area, and because it's susceptible to flooding, we've created an additional mechanical space there within the roof, up on the roof within that bulkhead area. So the house is not out of character with the adjacent area with the neighborhood. The house actually, to the east, is slightly larger from a square footage perspective. And it's our feeling that this is a transitional neighborhood, where you have a lot of small cottages that are being one by one removed and replaced with FEMA compliant, larger, more permanent residences in this neighborhood. And as a result, you're going to be seeing more of these elevated structures as storms continue to get worse. So there was a pyramid variance was issued at 43 East Shore Road for a pyramid of 3,124 cubic feet. I have a copy of that variance, I can produce a copy for your records as well.
I can jump in, I have a, I don't have a concern with a pyramid, but I have a concern with granting a height variance in an X-zone. It just would seem, what are the floor, what are the ceiling heights on the first and second floors, Susanna? Do you know?
The ceiling height on the first floor of clear spaces is 10 feet, and on the second floor, it's nine feet. And that's maximum, it could actually go down, the house hasn't been completely engineered, so the engineer may require additional space between the floors for additional ductwork or structural members. So that would be the maximum.
How high is it off the ground? It looked like it was on, you know, it looked like it was elevated as well.
It's eight feet elevated off the ground.
I, I just have, I've never been a proponent of elevations in X-zone, you have a unique situation because you're close to the water, but it's, it still is in X-zone, I just think, you know, with floor heights and elevation, they can't comply with the 32.
No.
I don't have an issue with like the size of the bulkhead, I just, I'm concerned with the height variance in an X-zone. And it's not a small height variance, it's 32 to 38, five and a half, so it's, you know, sometimes we see a foot or two, it's a lot. But at the same time, my understanding is, I'm sorry, might you have something?
Go ahead.
I'm just saying that I agree with that concern, and I'm not in favor of it.
I agree with that, too.
I'm just saying, I, I understand the need, and I, I think this is a unique situation in that the FEMA line's so close, but I just, and I haven't made a decision yet, I'll see if anyone's here, I'll hear, we have, it's a challenge for me, just thinking about giving a height variance in an X-zone, so I just need some time.
Especially for 10 feet ceilings.
The fact that this is not in a flood zone is really surprising, and our anticipation is. and our anticipation is most likely with the next remapping of the FEMA flood maps that this would be added to the flood zone. The maps haven't been redrawn since 2009. So that's over 10 years ago, that's 11 years ago. And with sea level rising and the flooding that is witnessed here at this particular site and the erosion that's aggressive at this particular location, we feel very strongly that the house needs to be elevated. In fact, it was a requirement of the conservation board review. So we have a resolution of conditional approval from the conservation board for this plan. We have a DEC approval. Health department has signed off on it pending the finalization of the conservation board permit. The only reason we haven't finalized the conservation board permit is because we would have to file a covenant preserving the entire property. And we're just hesitant to do that until we have everything else approved.
Yeah, it's just, it's too much house for, uh, it's just too much house for my, my ta- my taste, my observation.
Can the eight foot ceiling be made shorter?
The area underneath the house, you mean? I believe in order, the, um, Rob, is, uh, is Marcus on?
Susanna, could I, could everybody hear me?
Swear you in if you're gonna, uh, get testimonies, you're gonna state your name and address.
Sure. My, my name, my name is Robert Crabbe, 9 East Shore Drive, Southampton. And I, I, I do swear everything I say is, is truth and
Okay.
If there's anything else.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for your time this evening. I very much appreciate it. Supporting Susanna's comments, I mean, I've, I've been there for 14 years and I've seen obviously a lot of, lot of changes. My, my profession is, believe it or not, catastrophe insurance. So I'm, I'm, I'm seeing and dealing with increase in frequency and increase in severity of hurricane risk against the northeast every day. That's basically my, 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 um, that's how a lot of my time is spent is analyzing those coastal storm risk. And when we go back to Sandy in 2012, with the initial forecasted storm surge numbers, which were being reported for, for the Biconic, the expectation was, certainly my expectation was that the peninsula would have completely flooded. So, so luckily we were about nine to 12 inches away from that, that happening. And in fact, actually the, the water came within about a, a foot of the Biconic side of the property and to within about five feet of the fresh pond side of the property. So the water came all the way up through the yard to pretty much where the carport is. So it was, um, and, and the reason I know that is because when we came back to the property the next day, the, the tideline of, of debris material ran all the way along the property up a button where the, where the carport is, um, where the, where the brick, um, where the brick material is, um, supporting the carport. So when we were discussing the project with Marty Shay and, and Marty was, is obviously a big advocate for obviously conservation clearly, but was also, you know, sympathetic to what's happening environmentally in terms of climate change. And we've spent a huge amount of time over the last few years discussing how we can protect the property in a sympathetic manner, which is, which has been the, the, the beach stabilization project, which we completed in the fall. But really more importantly, with regard to the, the rebuild of the property, and I'm seeing FEMA flood maps changing significantly with obviously inland coastal risk coming in further inwards. We, I felt it really important to build to the FEMA hundred, 100 year flood code requirement, which is the, which is the eight feet above grade currently. And Marty and I, and with Susanna and Marcus and his design team had talked about this. And I think Marty said, look, I want to see people building smarter, designing smarter, really with, with view to obviously the, the future flood risk, which it, it's coming, it's getting worse. And, um, you know, we expect obviously with the increase in, in, in frequency of Atlantic storms. I mean, if we look at this, we look at last year, there were the, we, we went through the alphabet. There were, there were more, more storms making, making historical amount of storms making landfall. So I've very much appreciate what we're, what we're asking for is, is, is certainly new in terms of what is happening or what we've seen historically that's being built on the coastline. But I think it's, it, it, we have to be sensitive to obviously the, the changing environment. And I think Marty was very keen for us to really use the project to lead by example, to, to really show people how they should be building in these areas which are sensitive to flooding. I don't know if Marcus is on the, on the call or has any other, any other, I know Marcus is, if he has any other comments.
We're gonna do one person at a time.
Okay, so, sorry, Mr. Grossman. So, so we've, we've, we've spent a hu- I mean, three years essentially really in, in communication with, with Marty to refine the plans to where we are now. And, and, and obviously here we are, obviously with your good selves, seeking obviously the, the volume variance because of the, uh, and we're looking for, looking for that volume variance because obviously of the elevation. So I obviously appreciate that. That's probably a long-winded way of, of introducing me and a little bit of background and, and all the considerations we've had for the project. But we really have done our best to be sympathetic to the local environment and also to work in collaboration with the conservation board to build a, a property which is being built smart, is being built in a sustainable manner to withstand what the climate could possibly throw at us in the future.
Well, I just want you to understand, it's not that we're not willing to grant some relief. Okay, here, um, the level of relief, some of, some of it, particularly the height relief is way, way beyond what we see in oceanfront homes that are in a, a terrible dire situations dealing with, with, with coastal erosion. This is way, way past that in terms of what's being proposed. And that's, and that's the difficulty we're struggling with. Okay, so, so just so you can appreciate it, I think the pyramid but the height relief is really a problem. And so we gotta, that, that's gotta be, that's gotta be reduced. I'm hearing from members of my board, that's got, that the number's gotta go down.
Helen had asked about reducing the height underneath the house. And the way, the way that it's designed, the entry and elevator and stairs is underneath the house. So I believe as per code, we would have to maintain a conforming ceiling height, which I believe is seven and a half feet. So I can double check with the architect and with the building department, but I, I see six inches that could be reduced there.
Or can we change the steps?
It could be. That would really require redesigning the entire house.
I'm just saying, most of the houses I see on Dune Road do not have elevator entrances underneath the pilings. They have just steps shooting up from the bottom and you can make those whatever height, you know.
Sorry, may, may I make a comment?
Well, can you let Mr. Kelly finish his comment first?
So, yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I'm not saying you should put in steps as opposed to an elevator, but I think there's other designs that you could, um, put in there to, uh, to lower the pilings if you needed to.
So I, I just, I, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Could I just make a comment on that? Mr. Kelly, I'm, I'm always very sympathetic to that. My, the reason why we are putting the elevator in and we need access at grade is because my, my family from the UK come over every summer and expend, and have done for the last 14 years and spend an extended period of time with me out east just for good old summer family time. And my, my mother is, is disabled. And as such, we obviously making it ADA compliant with the elevator and obviously an ADA bathroom, bedroom on the, uh, on the first floor. So, so for that reason, we, we need to have the, um, or we, we would certainly desire to have the elevator access so that my family can continue to enjoy the property, enjoy summers with us.
So, so this, this application's gonna have to be reworked. I do not hear more, for votes in favor of the application the way it is. I just had a couple of questions and maybe, maybe clarification. So it's my understanding that the bulkhead are excluded from height in the town code.
Correct.
And so a possibility, and, and but you're saying here that the building inspector, because of its size, has said it's not.
That is correct. So before redesigning the whole house, my thought would be to reduce that.
Well, that's what my suggestion is. My suggestion is if you, if you make the bulkhead compliant to what the chief building inspector is looking for and you don't need height relief for that, it seems like you'd be a lot closer to the 32 because it seems to me that that is somewhere around eight feet, that bulkhead.
I believe that without the bulkhead counting, my initial application, I didn't include that. And I think we needed just a couple of feet of relief.
So at least that helps there. And then also with respect to ceiling heights, if, if they were able to be reduced a little bit, while it would help with the height, which I think is the primary concern, it would also reduce some pyramid. Now, the pyramid is not a lot, but it might be a function of, of reducing height that will reduce your pyramid, which can help you. And I'm, I'm sympathetic to the area and what you're looking to do. But it just seems like you're looking to lift eight and you're looking to have this larger bulkheads. You're, you're pushing from both ends, which I think you can rework and come back and, and have some, you at least have my support if you could eliminate the bulkhead from counting toward height. And if you could do something on the first or second floor to get a little closer, which would reduce your current reliefs and, and not change the design of the house much in my mind.
The building department doesn't seem to have a square footage requirement for that bulkhead. Does the zoning board have a, a square footage?
We, we don't, but I know there's been a dozen applications with bulkheads on Dune Road that the bulkhead did not count toward the height when they came here, so.
I'll look those up.
I would say.
I think it's not, not, it's not, certainly not supposed to have any storage area. It's supposed to be just functional.
Okay.
Yes, speaking of which, just want to confirm, this is, uh, you know, listed as a three story, but it's only three stories because of that, 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 you know, the, the little tiny upper, upper level. No, it's because of, it's, it's, it's because it's more than eight feet off the ground in an X zone.
No, it's, that's what I thought too, Brian, but the building department notes actually say it's because of the size, the size of the stair bulkhead constitutes a third story. I was concerned, I, I wasn't sure how that first level was in a story as well, but.
Way to get the height down changes. And I realize that this is also, this also may involve having to go back to the other boards and entities that you've gotten approvals for, this is a possibility. But, but it just, the, the way this is, it just has to be, uh, you know, reexamine so that we reduce, significantly reduce the amount of height relief. And see if we can get a revised proposal that isn't asking us to go in the direction that this application is going, is, is asking us to go.
I just want to add, I, I also just looked at my town code. Susanna, some of the notes that we had for the bulkheads, if you look at 3, 33084A, oh no, B, it talks about, um, oh wait, hold on. I lost it. I lost it, hold on. It said something about, um, it's, I'm sorry, I gotta find it later. I'll email you.
So there is something in the code that, that refers to the bulkhead?
I have writ- I have written down something about when the bulkhead is considered part of the residence. And like I said, that the application that I remember, you know, there wasn't, there's not supposed to be a landing where you're hanging out or storage. It's really just supposed to be covered space for you to access whatever is up there.
Okay. Okay, if you could email me that code and I'll, I'll research some other approvals and see what.
Okay. All right, um, any other questions of members of the board or Katie?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Crabbe, it's a brilliant design and it looks terrific. It's just, uh, it's just a bit too much. And if you could make some modifications, that would be appreciated.
Of course, thank you. And I don't appreciate, appreciate all the feedback and, uh, and, uh, I know, I know we'll, 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 we'll get that.
You just gotta really address the height thing. That's, that's what we're hearing. You gotta get the height corrected and that may be just adjusting the bulkhead. And you might get there with that. So that's not really changing your design, so.
Yep, I appreciate, appreciate that. And, and obviously, you know, thanks for all the comments and, and input. And we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get another meeting set up and, um, and, and come back and have another visit with you.
That's fine. And I see your architect, I think is willing to be heard as well. So since he's here, good evening, uh, Marcus, I swear you in, you state your name and address.
Marcus DaHanchi, 85, John Street, New York, New York, 10038.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay, so you probably have heard our discussion. Maybe you can
Yes. Yes, thank you very much. I want to make it quick because Susanna and Rob pretty much covered it. I do think that it is very unusual and we, we understand it's very unusual, which, which is why we really had a lot of conversation with Marty Shay, who I believe only has, has one very, very important interest, which is to protect and preserve the, um, the coastline and, and is doing a fantastic job at doing that. And we really spent a, a lot of time finding a way to look ahead in what we think, as Mr. Grab said, will, uh, become reality, which is the, the rising water levels. So the, so the eight foot is really, um, something that we are seeing elsewhere. And it is, uh, based on the 100-year flood zone. And you know, with this said, you know, Mr. Grab is giving up, um, what, what he has now as of right, which is a usable area on the ground and putting it, um, basically on, on top of the building. And the relief we're seeking really right now, uh, that, which is, um, 3,600 cubic feet is already a, a reduction that we worked on with Susanna. And I do think the building right now, we are, I think, um, that the railing height is at 33.6 feet. So we are a foot six higher, um, than the 32 feet. The, the bulkhead, I 100% agree, we, we are, we, we don't want a three-story building. We do want this to be a bulkhead. We will reduce the size. But I really strongly feel that this is an opportunity for the board. And I think it's an opportunity, uh, in general, to show that buildings need to be built to, uh, not only, uh, survive a storm, but also to allow nature to be conserved, which is what this building is doing by lifting it up. So I, I'm, I'm hoping, because we do want to move forward with this project, especially because of the damages we're having to the site already. So I'm hoping that if we stay with the 33, six height to the rail and turning the bulkhead into a proper bulkhead and maintaining the eight foot, um, which is recommended for the 100-year flood zone, I am hoping that we will get a more favorable, um, ruling from this board.
Okay, appreciate your comments. Is there anyone, uh, well, any questions of, um, of Marcus? Okay, if not, is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard?
Thank you.
This evening on Zoom in connection with the application of Crabbe. This is for 9 East Shore Drive in North Sea. If you are willing to be heard and you can raise your hand and let us know, um, this will be the time.
Adam, there's no hands.
No hands, okay. Well, Keith had been the lead, um, I guess he's still the lead. Suzanne, I guess my other question for you is, when would you like to come back?
Um, Marcus, do you think we can be ready at the next meeting or is that?
We don't have time on our agenda for the next meeting.
All right, so the, the second, the second meeting in March is, if that's available. And yeah, Marcus is giving the thumbs up that we'd like the, um, the second meeting in March.
Okay. Just, just to clarify that, we have room on the first March meeting. We just didn't have room on the first February meeting.
That's right. The second February meeting, just not the first February meeting.
So you have either February 18th or March 3rd are your options.
March 4th.
March 4th. I'm sorry, 3/4. So you have 2/18 or 3/4.
So you tell us what you, what you prefer.
Okay, I'm forgetting what month it is right now. Marcus, can you be?
The sooner the better. We can do this.
2/18 would be, I'll make that motion on behalf of Mr. Tuttle adjourned for Two eighteen would be, I'll make that motion on behalf of Mr. Tuttle, adjourned for all purposes, the two eighteen.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sessa.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Shavas, thank you all for your comments this evening. I look forward to seeing you, uh, again, February eighteen.
Thank you so much.
Problem. And I think we wanted to take a short break before we go to the next one.
I have number five, Douglas and Elizabeth Mouse, Moss. Property at Seventeen Pine Avenue in Flanders, tax map nine hundred one twenty-three, two lot forty-four. Applicant requests the following relief from the town code, one, to raise the existing dwelling and construct a proposed addition. Three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for an encroachment in the amount of six hundred and twenty-four point seven three cubic feet. Four fifty-two point seven eight for the existing dwelling plus one hundred and seventy-one point nine feet cubic feet for the proposed addition. Two for the front steps, three thirty dash eighty-three D yards to allow a stairway that is required by law to project into the required front yard at a setback of seventeen point one feet, where a setback of twenty point six feet would be permitted. Three for the portion of the proposed wraparound deck attached from the dwelling. Three thirty dash eighty-three A four to allow a deck that is higher than one foot above ground level to be located within the required front yard of the principal dwelling. And four for the, for the portion of their proposed wraparound deck attached west side of the dwelling, three thirty dash seventy-six D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And three thirty dash eighty-three C yards to allow this portion of the deck to be located within the total required side yard of the principal dwelling on a nonconforming lot and any other relief necessary.
For his jurisdiction?
Good evening, Nigel. Set the three in, if you can state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Nigel Robert Williamson, P O Box one seven five eight, South Old New York, one one nine seven two, to the best of my ability and knowledge. Yes, I swear to tell the truth.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell us about the application?
Uh, the application is, um, that there's an existing house with an enclosed porch at the rear. It's in an A, it's in an old ten, uh, zone district. It's in a A E six flood zone. The house, uh, if you look at the survey, the, um, the spot elevations are three point eight nine and three point nine two, three point six six, roughly four. The house has flooded before in Sandy. And it had came to two feet above finished floor level, finished floor level of the existing house is five point eight three feet. And again, uh, again, with, um, capillary action and everything else, it was approximately, it was approximately two feet, so we were almost at eight feet. We're proposing to raise the existing house, um, which is A E six plus two feet of freeboard, which would be A E eight. And we are proposing to go to put the finished floor elevation at twelve point seven six five feet, which is four point seven six five feet. Less a foot, it'd be three point seven six feet above the eight foot base flood elevation. We are also requesting, um, in addition to the south east side of the house, there are two existing sheds. Six feet eight or six foot eight and five foot eight. We're proposing to remove these sheds and take the same, uh, side property line down and the rear of the five by eight shed connected to the house. Also requesting to propose a new, uh, deck. Front stair with a deck that would wrap around and a side yard deck with a stair at the rear east side and the deck connected to the enclosed porch at the back. I did receive a letter, uh, from, uh, comments from Mr. O'Rourke. It has been a determination of the building department that a second story deck subject to principal building setbacks because, because it covers an area located below it. I'm not sure why I got this because, uh, I had a conversation at one point with Mr. O'Rourke. And because he saw this as, I guess, a second level as opposed to a second story is what he described it to me. So anyway, uh, wherever we are with that, then being that this is a principal structure, the, uh, the front yard setback at our ten would be thirty feet. We are at, um, seventeen point one feet, which is a forty-three percent, uh, encroachment into the front yard. On the side yards, I'm going to argue two ways here. I'm going to tell you, and I'm trying to take the best of this. On the side yard, it's ten foot minimum. Where on the west side, we're ten point two feet, so it complies. If you take the twenty-five feet total, then that's nineteen point seven feet we are at with both existing sides, and we would then have a twenty-one point two percent encroachment. And so I don't know how one would read that. We comply with the ten foot, but we don't want to comply with the twenty-five, uh, feet total. The rear yard is thirty feet. And that is, uh, the setback is twenty-one point, twenty-seven point one that we're asking, which is a ten percent encroachment. I did a quick calculation of the deck as a principal structure, and I guess that will be lock coverage. I came up with four hundred sixty point five three square feet, which is point zero, uh, which would be seven point six seven percent, which would give us then a lot of coverage of nineteen point three six seven percent, which is less than the twenty percent, um, allowed. And what can I tell you? Um, the, the property to the west is also owned by Mr. and Mrs. Boss. They purchased the property after Hurricane Sandy. It's got covenants and restrictions, can never be built on. The, um, the properties within the neighborhood are single and two-story. A lot of them have already complied with flood, um, raising. There are the property to the corner of Long Neck Boulevard and Pine Avenue. And is still within the flood zone, it's single story. The property to the west, uh, or to the east of Mr. and Mrs. Mouse is at the same elevation approximately there in a flood zone. The property to the south have already raised their house. So I guess the neighborhood, they're raising their houses, uh, from Sandy anyway. And what else can I tell you? Um, I guess that's about it. The underside of the house is purely for storage. And if the A E eight is taken into account, uh, A E eight eleven, so you have three point seven six five feet between A E eight and the underside of the two by twelves or two by sixes, whatever is existing for the existing, uh, structure. So other than storage, which, uh, as FEMA says, you can store lawnmower, you can store a canoe. They don't recommend a canoe because as a canoe rises with the water, it becomes a vessel for increasing pressure and causing destruction. So it's never going to be a habitable space. And I guess is what I'm saying. And so I, I guess that's the general overview, I think. And I don't know if you want me to read every single thing I wrote.
Oh, that's okay.
I thought so.
You have a long night tonight.
Yeah, I saw Mass Exodus when you saw my name. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right. Um, but we did have some building department, the comments from Dennis, uh, then I don't know whether you saw them already.
Just the one about the, the second story deck.
Okay, so here's what we got, uh, this is from Dennis O'Rourke. As a result of raising the existing dwelling and adding non-habitable unconditioned storage space underneath, the existing dwelling will become a two-story dwelling since the two levels will be above grade. Two, since the dwelling will be a two-story dwelling, the proposed wraparound deck will be considered a second floor deck and shall be included in the total lot coverage calculation. If the lot coverage percentage exceeds the allowable twenty percent, then a variance will be required. And three, the survey shall be revised to indicate that the dwelling will be a two-story dwelling.
Okay. Okay, um, my, my question is, are stairs counted in lock coverage or not? Because I had not included the stairs. I've included the solid decks and platforms around the house. And if the stairs are included, they may, they may push me close to the twenty percent. I, um, I did, like I say, have a telephone conversation with Mr. O'Rourke because this came up about the two-story and two levels. Because I made an argument, if this is a two-story and you ever want to go down the road and put a second story on the dwelling, would then become a third story. And he stated to me that it's not a two-story but a two-level. So anyway, that may be a moot point because we're, we're not applying for a second story on the, on the building.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that whatever Dennis's concerns are, you know, that I read, that, that, you know, they be addressed.
No, absolutely. And I made my argument, and I, I'm just saying this as a point of interest, that this became a second story, um, dwelling, and you wanted to put another story on it for bedrooms and make your living area on the, on the residence larger, then it would be a third story. So, and we know, no one likes three stories in town in Southampton, even with fire sprinklers. So I, I don't know how would one, and again, this is just a point of interest. How would one read that down the road? I mean.
Well, you should, Nigel, you should get some clarity because you're absolutely right.
You should talk to Dennis O'Rourke.
Right, right, but, but I did speak to him, and I said, at this point, my clients are not, um, are not asking for what will be now come a third story. They're just asking for their deck. So, um, I know Mr. and Mrs.
So you don't want clarity because this is, this is going to be in the file, and it's two-story dwelling.
Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Moss, I see her on the, the video thing there. I don't know if they would like to comment.
Okay, well, we're just suggesting that you, that you speak with, with Dennis to get, to make sure that, you know, that you understand, um, and the applicant understands exactly how this application is being presented. So we have an application before us that is, uh, that, that, at least based on the building department comments, um, is a proposed two-story dwelling. At least that's what the comments say.
Right, right. I mean, on this, he never made a call.
And, and, uh, he wants, Dennis wants the survey revised, so the survey says it's a two-story dwelling.
Right, right, okay. Because I know this came up with, uh, Ms. O'Reilly, she had stated that it was a two-story. And I had spoken, and again, this is all verbal with Mr. O'Rourke on the phone. And he said, no, 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 it's not a two-story and maybe a two-level. Because I made my argument as.
Yeah.
Like the other houses in the neighborhood have two floors of habitable space raised up.
Yeah, well, I mean, just, just reading the comments, uh, you know, unconditioned storage space underneath is making the building apartment interpreted as a two-story dwelling. And that, you know, I, I would, I would say you should need to have that discussion. I mean, storage underneath for what? I mean, if you're going to put anything underneath, that means it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, a, a level. I, I don't know. Maybe there's some, maybe, you know, it could be refined a little bit as to, so that it's not deemed to be two stories.
Correct, because how, it's, it's non-habitable space.
I understand, but we, we need to have that conversation with that.
Right. Unless Mr. and Mrs. Moss, if they may jump in and just let's say whether they want to proceed with this or clarification on the second story, no.
Well, I don't see any downside to you getting clarification.
And you'll have thirty days at least.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. But we're glad to have your comments. Just have to swear you both in. If you can state your names and addresses, please.
Douglas Moss, seventy-six Day Street, Grand V, Connecticut.
Elizabeth Moss, seventy-six Day Street, Grand V, Connecticut.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Absolutely.
Okay, you can give us your comments.
Um, I, I'm a little surprised, uh, a sand floor and concrete walls, um, are all we anticipate underneath the house. It's a one-story house now. Our intent very simply is to raise it by eight feet so that it doesn't flood several times a year, uh, right now.
The back porch area.
It, uh, it's just, it's, it's an untenable situation right now, uh, because every nor'easter, uh, the, the house floods to some extent, certainly not the two feet inside that we had with Sandy. But, um, probably two years ago now, we watched the water come up to the floor level while we were in the house. That's a little scary. Uh, we can't, you know, it, it doesn't make sense for us. And all we want to do is, uh, raise a one-story house by one story.
Right. And, and I don't think anybody on this board, I don't mean to speak for my colleagues, but I don't think anybody in this board has a problem with your raising, uh, the house and under protected from flooding. We want people to do that, okay? Uh, so it's just a matter of getting clarification from the building department as to what, uh, and why the building department's position currently is that doing what, doing what you're planning to do is two stories and you're, and Nigel is raising legitimate points uh, as to, you know, why that should be the case. And our suggestion is for Nigel to have a conversation with Dennis O'Rourke and the building department to get clarity, to find a way to make sure that the building department will consider this structure to be a one-story structure, not a two-story structure. We don't want to limit, you don't want to limit your future use of the property by deeming it a two-story dwelling when it's not two stories. So that's our suggestion, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, that sounds like an excellent suggestion, Nigel. Go for it. Um, that, that's all we want to do. We, we want to raise the house so it doesn't flood. And to make it a two-story house seems a little odd.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, it's, we're in, I'm in support of what you intend to do. It's just a technicality about one story or two story that Nigel needs to work out with the building department.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nigel.
Mr. Chairman, um, when would we, when would we then be coming back to you again, or how is this working?
Well, I mean, I think we would just need something in writing from Dennis that is to be deemed one story. And maybe, you know, under what circumstances is deemed one story? Does it mean that there's no storage underneath? Does it mean it's, you know, very limited storage underneath? But we just need that clarified. So I don't know that we necessarily need you to come back.
Yeah, written submission is fine.
Yeah, we could open.
So, and you just, you know, reach out to him and figure out what, what it is that needs to be done. For this being by the building of the story, you know, if we weren't doing this now, you'd be doing it when you'd be submitting, uh, you know, the application, you know, for the permits. So may as well get this squared right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay, any other questions of members of the board or Katie or Anthony? Yes, Nigel, something else?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to box myself into a corner. But for whatever argument then Mr. O'Rourke makes, and it does end up being a second story, then I just do a submission to you with the revised. Okay, okay, okay.
Yes. So either, either way, we just be dealt with with written submissions rather than you coming back.
Okay, are we having any discussion? Will we have a discussion now about the deck and the raising or not, or it's just?
Why not? I mean, yeah, you, you, well, you made your, your presentation to us. So I certainly can ask, uh, you know, members of the board, uh, if there are any concerns about other than, uh, the issue of one-story structure versus two-story structure, whether we have any concerns about the requested variance relief that's, uh, that the applicant is seeking. And I have to say, the wraparound porch, I can't remember seeing wraparound porch for quite some time. We don't see them very often, but it seems to me like the zoning code makes it really difficult to have a wraparound porch. I don't know why that is. The mysteries of the zoning code. The pyramid of leaf is extremely modest. Um, have you heard from any of the neighbors, Nigel?
Uh, yes, I did. Uh, yes, I did. I heard from one neighbor, the neighbor to the south behind who's raised their house. And, um, I, I didn't hear from the neighbor. I heard from her son because he's her trustee or executor or something. She's elderly. And he had just wanted me to go through what, what it was. He just wanted to understand that. He said he had no problems. And other than I had put his mother down as a mister, when her name is Mrs., but that's because there's nothing in front of these names, and I guess them sometimes from the addresses, I guess.
Yeah, and, and now that, and now that you mentioned the neighbor, and if the neighbor is the house, why don't you find out if their house is considered a two-story or one-story? I think that information might be helpful to you.
It'd be a three.
It would be a three-story.
There, there is to be a three-story?
Yeah.
Wow. Well, I would say, looking into how that was application was handled in the building department, Nigel, just a hunch, that it might be helpful to you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, no, no problem. Uh, any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom this evening in connection with the application of Moss? This is a property located at seventeen Pine Avenue in Flanders. If you're waiting to be heard, uh, please raise your hand. This will be the time to let us know. Is there anyone, Charlie?
Sorry, my button was stuck there.
That's okay.
No one, no hands.
No hands, okay. All right, uh, if not, Jason, it's yours.
Uh, I will make a motion to close the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions until February twenty-second, uh, for revised survey, clarification from the building department, and a decision on three, four.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Han.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Mrs. Sessa.
Hi.
Chair of the side, thank you for comments, for your comments this evening. Yes, Nigel, you had another question?
Just one more. Uh, when do I have to have my written submission and are my written stuff back by?
Well, well, we have it for all written submissions by February twenty-second. But if you can get, get it to us, you know, like mid-February, that probably will be helpful. If you can get it, get it around, around February, roughly.
No, 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 I'm going to try to give them next week.
Okay, that, that's fine. Okay, okay, excellent.
Okay, Mr. and.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
No problem. Appreciate you coming. Take care. Have a good night.
Good night.
Item number six on the agenda, Robert Raphael, six thirty-nine Dune Road, West Hampton. Tax, tax map nine hundred, three ninety-one, two twenty-eight, uh, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, the public hearing was closed.
You don't have to read this. You don't have to read this.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. John Bennett for the applicant. Um, my clients, Rob and Michelle, uh, Raphael are here as well. This is, um, oh, I, I think sort of a little bit of a tempest in a teapot. I got involved in this because, um, the Raffels put a, with, with, uh, permission, put a building, a pool in the, um, in the area of a, of a deck, you know, under the coastal erosion hazard law. That's fine, because you can always trade coverage for coverage. And then, um, the issue became a fence, and I, I met with both Kyle Collins and Mike Benacasa, who, I'll be very candid with you, felt a little bit bad because one of the building inspectors had told my clients that they could put a chain-link fence up as a pool enclosure fence, because there had been a, um, a, a plastic fence there, and that didn't, what didn't suffice, and indicated that they could put up, uh, the chain-link fence that is there, uh, well in front of the pool and well in front of where uh, we want to put the fence. Uh, and, uh, and we're, we're proposing to remove that. The, uh, as, I, I, I think Mike and Kyle felt a little bit bad about the fact that the building inspector, one of their inspectors had allowed them, and I'm, 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 I'm attesting this to you as, as a member of the bar and affirming to this. This was all conversations that I had with, uh, both Kyle and Mike. So what they suggested was this, uh, that this astroturf or artificial turf could be used and, and a fence around that. Uh, the neighbor, uh, was concerned about it, so this is why we're here. Um, and so what are we proposing? We're proposing two things, a fence seaward of the property line, uh, seaward of, seaward of the pool, I should say, uh, and also a second-story deck. Uh, you, so let's just talk a little bit about the deck first. It's a, it's a two-hundred-and-sixty-one square foot second-floor deck over existing coverage. The first time the application was made, uh, Patrick Fife, who was then, uh, with Tommy Latham, affirmatively stated on the record that his client's concern was the fence, not the second-story deck. Uh, we also hopefully have, uh, um, uh, in the file, uh, you should have received it, a, a letter from um, the, um, neighbor to the, uh, uh, east, uh, uh, Matt Lambiaz, who's the owner of six thirty-seven Dune Road in West Hampton, who says he has no, uh, issues with the application as a whole, any of it, any of it, as the, the application as we've originally submitted. So one of the neighbors, we're, we're going to suggest some modifications, and we've given you a sketch, um, to try to, uh, be honest with you, I hope this isn't too strong a word, appease the neighbor. Uh, as a student of history, I'm al- always concerned with the use of the word appeasement, I think in nineteen thirty-eight, but in any event, I say that for your amusement, hopefully. Uh, but, uh, what we're going to do is, um, we, we do have a letter from Mr. Lambiaz, who is the neighbor to the east, has no problem with the application as a whole. Certainly, he is the one who would be most affected by the deck. The deck is a second-story deck. It's not going to be roofed or anything like that. Uh, is, uh, and, uh, it's over existing square footage. I don't want to be too presumptuous, but I, I don't see that as an issue at all, at all, and certainly neither, neither one of the neighbors saw that. I, I'm not misquoting Mr. Fife. I was presumably someone, uh, will be here in his stead, uh, representing the neighbor. Um, so what do we, the real base of this application, uh, then, I think the real, the real crux of this application, trying to move, I'm going to try to move as fast as I can, uh, is that, um, we'd like to put a fence, uh, to the south of the pool. Uh, we had originally showed it, uh, at about sixteen feet. Uh, my client spoke to the neighbor to the west, who's the one who's been, uh, objecting to any fence seaward of the pool, which I think is, creates a significant practical problem. You have to walk around it. Uh, and, uh, he, uh, and I'm, uh, based upon my discussions with the client, he had no problem with a fence three feet south of the coping of the pool, uh, uh, in the easterly portion of the pool area, uh, but, uh, nothing more, and nothing more than that in the easterly portion of the property. That's just not practical. Uh, but I did tell my client, uh, who we originally showed the fence at sixteen feet seaward of the pool, uh, you, you have to compromise. The board likes to see compromise. The board doesn't like it when people come in and have a request for relief. The neighbor objects, and they just stand their ground and don't try to compromise. So what we've done, and hopefully that sketch, uh, and we have a sketch, uh, because we didn't want to go, uh, to the expense of having the surveyor put it on until we figured out where the board, how the board felt on, on this. So what we've done is we've shown it, uh, on, and it should, you should have it, we, we took in red pen, um, we showed a fence in the east-westly portion of the property, eight feet, as opposed to what we particularly, what we originally wanted was sixteen feet, and the neighbor objected to, eight feet from the subtly, from the subtly edge of the coping of the pool. No deck in there. This is just to be able to get, get around the pool area, which is just a, a real practicality. What do we, and, and then as it goes to the east, the fence pushes out further to the sixteen-feet area, uh, still much further to the north of the, uh, fence that was put in and will be removed, uh, because I'm being told, I'm being told that once you get to the easterly portion of the property, the neighbor to the east, based upon, west, 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 based upon my conversations, uh, with my clients and the Raphael, Raffels over here, uh, and will tell you this, uh, didn't have a problem uh, with a, a, a more subtly fence as that, as, as it went to the east. It's a little interesting to me, uh, in terms of what we're asking for and really what the effect of it is, and particularly when you look about, look at what the purpose for the coastal erosion hazard areas. Oh, oh, before, I'm sorry, before the, before we forget, uh, there was, uh, some questions about the, uh, extent of the dune restoration after the pool. Uh, the board has some concerns about that. So we did, we have submitted, uh, a, um, a, a dune restoration plan, which of course, uh, w- we are offering as part of a condition for any relief that the board would. What are we talking about? Well, you know, what's the, what's the purpose of the coastal erosion hazard area? The purpose of this coastal erosion hazard area is, 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 is to, uh, to mitigate impact on coastal protection, uh, coastal protection features. We're not suggesting any change to that. We're talking about a fence. And to use, to use, uh, a sort of a, a very common example, you know, fences are laced throughout the coastal erosion hazard area. Well, south of it, uh, you see, uh, you see snow fence all over the place. There's, and, 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 and that's encouraged. As a matter of fact, I know it's encouraged for, for a different reason to build up the dune, but what that tells you is that a mere fence doesn't have any impact on coastal, uh, protection structures. Um, I, I, it just, it, it's, it's not something that is, is, is doing any harm to the whole purposes for the coastal erosion hazard area, plus the actual practical effect, the practical effect of just being able, uh, with this fence, which again, in the, in the western side of the property, we've cut down the request from about sixteen feet to eight feet. Uh, it, it, it just, it, it, it doesn't have any practical effect on, on the purposes for these, which these laws are, or, 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 or have been, have been enacted, number one, and number two, just from a real practical effect, it allows very natural circulation around the pool. No decking, no decking. Just pool coping, then a fence eight feet in the westerly part, a little bit further to the ocean and the easterly part of the property. So, uh, we have to leave this open. I assume that the neighbor is here to say some things. I know my clients wanted to say a few things. Just to talk about generally their, you know, their, uh, the, the manner in which they've been able to use the property and want to continue to use the property. So we have to keep it open for a, a new survey, uh, in any event. So I will be asking you to keep it open, but also we're here to answer any questions or, or to, uh, uh, any response that the board has. Um, I don't know if you want to hear from my clients first, or, or you want to ask, uh, me questions. Uh, and then, of course, I guess you're going to, you're going to hear from the neighbor to the west.
Yes. Um, questions of, uh, John, for members of the board?
I had a question. Uh, John, what is, so what is, I know, I think you said that you moved it eight feet, so what is, there's just add eight feet to the setback from the rest of the dune?
Yes, 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 yes.
It was like fifty-eight point five.
Yeah, merely for the fence, yes, merely for the fence.
And then the, and then the astroturf or whatever that's coming up and?
Yeah, I, you know, it seems like, I mean, that was a, that was, to be honest with you, it seemed to me that that was an attempt by, uh, and, and you, you know, you you can call them and ask them. I think both Mike and Kyle felt bad that, uh, one of their folks had said, go ahead, put this fence in, uh, and then, you know, which is much further southeast. There was this metal fence to be removed, and that's, uh, and, and they had done it with the, uh, you know, with the consent of the building department. Uh, and I think they felt bad, uh, because the, the suggestion was that fence would be, would be fine. Uh, and I sat down with them, and I said, well, you know, we're not going to be able to leave it that far out. Uh, so they tried to come up with this astroturf thing. I think the neighbor to the west doesn't like it. I don't think Janice likes it, so, um, it was an attempt to come to some sort of terms, uh, we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to stand on that astroturf. We'll just, uh, we'll just remove that as part of the request. It had been something that they, that had been used at the, at the suggestion of Kyle and Mike. But again, uh, it seems to create a lot of concerns with the neighbor to the west, uh, and, uh, I think Janice didn't, didn't like the idea of it. Uh, I guess it probably affects that some of the dune function would be her, uh, her thought on it. I, I can't get into her mind, but I think that's probably what she's thinking.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. So that, so, so because you're moving the fence eight feet, you know, closer, that whole area would be re- revegetated in your plan?
Yes, the area, that area where you, it's a jog, it does a jog. So the area, the area to the south of that jog, uh, and the area to the south of the, uh, the fence, which is closer to the o- ocean on the east side, would all be, uh, uh, revegetated. Yes, yes, yes. I, I don't, I, I just, I don't, I don't know. I, I, you know, I, I don't, this is not, this is not, it's, it, it, it's not a building. It's not something covering. It's not a deck. Uh, I don't know, maybe I'm old school, but, uh, you know, growing up in the, in Southampton, spent a lot of time on the beach. People have fences all over the beach. I, I really, I really would sort of scratch my head and see how this would have any negative effect on, uh, on any coastal protective, uh, feature or any dune feature.
Okay, so I want to see if your clients would like to comment and, uh, tell us what they'd like to tell us.
Yeah, probably have to unmute yourself.
Yep.
So I'm trying to do.
Okay. I mean, I don't think, oh, you, people think we're sworn in, so I, I would have to swear you in, so unless you're attorneys. You're not.
We, we, we are.
Non-practicing.
Not, not practicing.
For, for your attorneys, and then you can just state your names and addresses, that's fine.
Michelle Raphael, six thirty-nine Dune Road in West Hampton.
Robert Raphael, six thirty-nine, uh, Dune Road in West Hampton as well.
Okay, can you tell us your comments?
Sure. First of all, good evening to all of you, and thank you very much for letting, giving us the opportunity to be heard. We really appreciate it. So you know, we're rule followers. We asked permission for everything. We did what we were told. The seller got the first variance to put the pool in, in his existing deck area. And then all we did was seek to make like two more feet in the pool in that same area. And the owner, the previous owner, had used the land south of the pool for chairs and, and whatnot. Um, we really do need the space so that we can walk around the pool so that you could sit and watch the pool. If there are kids in the pool, so you could just, you know, for, for just general use and enjoyment, not, we're not looking to have a huge congregation, huge traffic, you know, massive grouping around that pool. Just want to be able to sit and enjoy it. We bought the house to enjoy with our family. Our three kids are getting older, and we wanted to have a place that they can come home to and spend time with us. As Mr. Bennett said, we offered already to reduce the variance, the, the variance request, particularly on the west, on the west side of the property.
Right.
Um, our neighbor made it, we did meet our neighbor this past weekend for the first time. Um, he didn't want to really discuss reducing anything on his side. We also, by the way, offered to put in plantings on his side, because he made it clear that from his second-floor deck, he doesn't want to see our people or our lounges or anything else. He effectively wants that little, that coin, that part of our property for his use and enjoyment, which is nothing. So we really, he said, with, as terms of the plantings, he said he didn't think it can grow that high in enough time, and then he feared we could always remove it. So that's where we went, you know, we, we really did try. We agree, you know, neighbors should get along. You know, everybody wants to be out there for, to spend time with their families, use in enjoyment.
I just want to mention in terms of screening, if we require the screening to be maintained as part of a determination, then it can't be removed. That's just, just, you know, what, what it's, what it's worth.
Yeah, we, we understand that, and the offer to screen still.
Right, now I get it.
Yeah, no, the, we understand.
We had no intention of removing it. He said that, that you can't remove the trees. Right, no, no, no.
Um, yeah, you take over. Um, first, I want to apologize to, uh, Councilman Han. I, if, you know, my kid's going to Duke, I see the North Carolina shirt, so, uh, please don't.
All right, I went to West Virginia, and just a fan.
That's not going to help me out anyway. Um, let me, I, I like to give a little history on this. So when we, when, when this came about, you know, it's the, uh, we had asked certain questions. The building department was the one that told, we had asked a question, can we plant grass in that area? And they said, no. And the building department specifically said, you cannot plant, you can't plant grass. And I asked about the aster, they said, absolutely, as long as you take it up. They're the ones that, you know, empowered me to, you know, empowered me. They're the ones that told us to do, and we, at a considerable expense, we put that down for my, you know, for, so my kids would have the ability, you know, and instead of walking on grass or, on, um, on the shelves, whatnot there, to walk on the astroturf, and everyone was fine with it. Um, so.
And we intend, we fully intend to roll it up.
We fully intend to roll it up in the winter months, and we had no issue with that whatsoever. As far as, um, my neighbor to the west,
I, I believe in getting along with people as best you can. I will do anything to make my neighbor happy, you know, i- if I can have my application. So I gone to him earlier and said, what can I do that makes, what, what is it that upsets you about, you know, this? And he basically came out and said, I do not want to see your people. Um, and I, I didn't know where to go with that. I said, I, okay, so what if I plant over here? Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll put trees in there that are, you know, compliant with, you know, the, um, the area that make it so you don't see our people. And his answer was, you know, well, they can be cut down at a certain point. Once you have approval, you know, you can't, you know, you, you have the ability to like control that afterwards. I didn't know where to go with that. I hadn't heard from, from some time, you know, just so you know, I, I'm pretty sure the building department, what? The building department was called sixty-two times to our property during our construction. Not once did they issue a violation. Um, in fact, every time they came, whatever they wanted, I would do. And, you know, I've asked the building department to come and, you know, and please testify to that fact that. You know, you know, anything that they asked, you know, we would do for them. We're, you know, we're rule followers in our life. So if someone tells us and gives us permission to do something, we do it. If someone tells us what the rules are, we follow them. So recently I tried to reach out to my neighbor again and I was able to meet him this week. And basically, you know, the same thing, I said, what can I do to appease you? I, I'm here to work it out, tell me what I could do to make you happy. You know, my neighbor to the, you know, to the eastern side has absolutely no problem and such gave a letter to that effect, that he has no problem. My neighbors across the street, same thing. Um, have no problem, would gladly, gladly come on a Zoom call, you know, they said, and testify on our behalf. I'd like to know what I can do to have the use so I can put a lounge chair on the other side of my pool and not feel like a caged animal. You know, I have a pool, I have a, a fence on my pool. So I would do anything to appease my neighbor to the other side, whether it be plantings, whether we be moving my, you know, my requested area in for him. But, you know, at this point.
Some room.
We need some room to put a chair so we can watch our kids when they're in the pool. This house, we, when we bought this house, the sole purpose of buying this house was to enjoy it for our family. You know, we worked hard for everything that we have in our life. Um, our kids, our kids are getting older and we wanted an ability to see our kids and hopefully grandkids one day, um, in our property. And to, you know, to say I can't use my property, um, seems, seemed to be a little bit, a little bit unfair. And to be quite honest, I mean, there are plenty of properties, you know, there's, I think, maybe twelve, thirteen properties that are in your purview on ours, you know, on our side of Dune Road. Um, you know, the rest is West Hampton Beach or West Hampton Dunes. If you go into West Hampton Dunes, anything goes. If you go to West Hampton Beach, any, you know, they, they certainly granted these. There are houses that have the same thing. In fact, my neighbor who's complaining about it, his walkway goes past our eight feet. So all I'm trying to do is find a way to make him happy and make you guys happy. So please give us direction as to how you feel we should proceed.
Okay, well.
Thank you. Sorry for that long, lo- lo- long explanation.
Okay, so John, unless there's anything else you wanted to, to add, I was gonna ask of the neighbor.
Nope, nope.
Okay, okay, all right, Mark?
Hello, hello, Chairman Grossman, other board members, Rob and Michelle and.
I believe Mark, you were previously sworn in?
I'm an attorney as well, retired.
Me as well, so you're not.
A lot of, a lot of lawyers here. Um, I have, I had three objects, three reasons to object. Um, one was privacy, the, the way the properties were situated and the way. The properties would have been situated had the Rafael's complied with their original building code, building a, a permit and variance. I, I basically would never have seen them, um, where the properties are screened. The, um, so uh, as Marty Shay pointed out in his submission to you. Th- this property has already been granted a variance post-construction extending into the coastal erosion hazard area.
Trivia.
Excuse me? Um, and, and now we're, now they're asking for sixteen to eighteen feet more. I did meet with Mr. Raphael over, oh, so my reasons, privacy, we couldn't see each other, it was very nice that way, the aesthetic. Secondly, um, this, it's a little more than just a, a fence, because what happened here is that they basically excavate, cleared and excavated a significant area of the dune. And leveled it. And, and have effectively extend, extended their patio into the dune. Um, the, um, so that, that offended me, that actually bothered me just as a legal matter and as a risk matter in terms of. You know, cutting into the dune like that. And, and you could look at their building plans, you can see that the ground elevation was seventeen feet. We had the deck and it went out to twenty feet, where, so they basically excavated three feet. And if you look at the southwest corner of the, where they cleared, three feet deep, and they leveled it. Um, from, to that point. Um, so that bothered me, you know, as a, as a, just a citizen. And last was the aesthetic, um, in terms of we had, you know, we had a very pretty view of the dunes. And, you know, the idea of looking at a fence in, out and, you know, eighteen feet out or fifteen feet. And, and beach umbrellas and lounge chairs just would change the aesthetic area. Um, I did meet with Mr. Raphael, I, I suggested, well, we wound, I suggested as a compromise, the three feet. Uh, three feet off the deck on, you know, alongside the pool to give them egress or, and, you know, they can get it out of the pool on that side. You know, their, their, their original permit and variance said that the fence would be on the, on the perimeter of the deck itself. I suggested the three feet, I lim, tried to limit it to three feet so that there wouldn't be lounge chairs and umbrellas there purposefully. Cause that would, again, change the aesthetic of the, the neighborhood. Um, or at least my, the aesthetic for my property. Um, and then I agreed that they could, you know, as Mr. Bennett submitted in his drawing. They could, uh, uh, you know, a couple of feet short of the end of the pool, sort of the east end of the pool, jut out to, I suggested. Where the existing PVC fence is, which I think is short of eighteen feet, maybe fifteen or sixteen feet. So I did offer a compromise, I don't, you know, I wasn't trying to be completely intransient, entrenches it on this. Uh, so that's how I feel. Um, I think it, you know, I won't, I wouldn't object to the three feet. And, you know, the extension as Mr. Bennett drew it out to fifteen feet or so. Um, again, as a way to compromise, I think it's a bad precedent. Uh, and, and for the neighborhood in terms of a potential erosion in this coastal erosion hazard area. But we've got to, you know, others to debate.
Okay, well, having listened to, to, you know, um, uh, the testimony thus far, um, my inclination is that we render a decision. Okay, it doesn't sound to me like there's really any common ground to reach, uh, to, to reach a, an agreement. If between when we close the public hearing and we render a decision, an agreement is reached, let us know. But I just don't, don't see having more, spending more time trying to get a, trying, trying to get, get the parties to reach a compromise when it just doesn't seem that it's, it's happening.
I thought that, wasn't that a compromise? John, isn't, isn't that consistent with your plan?
We went from sixteen throughout entire face of it. Uh, to eight in the westly part to hopefully, uh, you know, uh, I keep on, I'm sorry, I keep on using this word, it's, it's too power, P's, uh, to, to compromise with Mr. Rigante.
Oh, but, but he had asked, Mr. Rigante had asked for three, right?
So there is not.
Started at sixteen.
Got it.
He went to, he wanted zero, I just, I'm not saying anything, I'm just laying it all out.
No, I got it.
You had to correct me if I'm saying something wrong. Uh, we started sixteen, he, he was at zero, we went to, he went to three, we went to eight. Uh, you know, to me, again, th- these are, I, I'm just, I, the only, I, you have to even, even open maybe just for written submission, because I have to actually put this on a, on a survey. I think we spent more than enough time on this. I would just suggest to you that aesthetic concerns and privacy concerns have nothing to do with the coastal erosion hazard area laws. Uh, and in turn, and we're having a dune restoration there, uh, and this is merely a fence. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that and I agree, you've probably, probably spent more than, more time than necessary on this, which is not to suggest that we're not. You know, very much want this relief, but it, it is what it is and I think you guys. Get it, what we want and what the positions are and we'll wait for your decision. I'll, if you could close it for written, this, for written submission, so I can get your survey that shows. Are, are, you know, it, it drawn by a licensed surveyor instead of me with a, with an engineer's, uh, uh, rule and a red pen, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Bennett, could I suggest one other thing in terms of? Um, that I would ask that instead of extending that fence all the way to the property line. That you end it at the edge, the western edge of the pool so that. You know, whether it's three feet or six, eight feet or whatever the zoning board decides.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Rigante, I, I'm very happy for you to have a conversation with Mr. Bennett on, you know, outside of this public hearing tonight. Spend the next hour going over all the details of it. If, if agreement can be reached, I'm fine with that, but, but we spent enough time on this, we really have, yeah.
You understood what I said, though, right?
I, I understand, but, but we've spent enough time on this and I think it's time to bring, bring this to a conclusion. Yeah, but, but I encourage communication and if the agreement can be reached, I'm fine with that and I suspect the rest of my board is fine with that too. I just have to bring this to a conclusion.
Thank you.
Chairman Grossman, can I say one last thing?
No, 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 I, I'm sorry, you're gonna shoot me tomorrow, okay?
Mr. Rigante again, if you liked it tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll do that.
That's fine, that's fine.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, very good. Uh, are there any other questions or comments for members of the board or Katie?
Nope.
Is there anyone else from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Raphael? Uh, this is for six, three, thirty-nine Dune Road in West Hampton.
No hands.
No hands, okay, if not, Mike is yours.
Mine? Okay, we're gonna close, uh, close this for, uh. Public hearing and accept written submissions until February, uh, twenty-second, is it?
Yes.
And we'll have a decision on March fourth.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mr. Hahn.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Um, Mrs. Sessa. Can't hear you, Brian.
Fine, you muted yourself.
Muted.
Hi.
Ms, Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Okay, care about side, thank you all for your comments this evening, have a good rest of your night. Thank you. Take care.
All right, number eleven, eighty-five Eastway LLC, property at eighty-five Eastway Drive, Schenochak Hills, tax map nine hundred two thirty-three, two lot one. This is a holdover.
Hi, Gina. Good evening, Gina Rigdon, DKR Shores, here to represent eighty-five Eastway Drive, Michaela and Ryan Metzler. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
I don't feel good today, this is my don't feel good look.
Feel better.
Thanks. So, um, the last time, just to recap, uh, the board entertained the application of saving the historic barn. Um, and, uh, offered to, um, connect it. Uh, and then, um, be okay with the application, which we did. And I'm hoping Candace, I don't know if you're there, are received copies of the new survey and plans. And, uh, we connected the main dwelling, uh, proposed house with the historic barn. Uh, by a glass heated corridor. And.
What's the new relief that you need?
The relief stays the same, there's, there's no additional relief needed, just to connect it, so, um, it becomes part of the principal.
Right, so, but we. So the relief is gonna change with that?
So, yeah, um, hold on.
You're gonna have to deal with this.
All right. It would, I have to get everything out. Um, so we have thirty-four to Eastway Drive, which is a front yard. Um, and. Looking my, my side. My minimum principal for front is eighty. Uh, and it, but it's a. It's not a main drag either. Um, and I have two front yards, so keep that in mind. Um, the existing house also originally was at twenty-five, which was continued. Um, so we're keeping basically the same. Distance to Montalk Highway that the existing barn house previous residence was. Um, and by moving the. Historical barn structure towards Eastway Drive. Um, we have a typically would be side yard setback, but it's not, it's a, it's a front yard because it's Eastway Drive of thirty-four. So, do the math.
But I'm just having a hard time following what the new relief is, so.
Yeah.
So principal is, is required is eighty in this district. So we're going closer towards Eastway Drive. Um, so it would be forty-five. It would be forty-five to be able to keep the barn. Where we have it proposed located right now.
You, all you need is two setback reliefs, you're saying?
Correct, um, we just, we need, um, the front yard setback in order to keep the barn. Um, on the Eastway Drive side of the property. Which is the same setback, well, it's similar, it's in line with the old structure. It's literally just moved to the west.
We, I mean, you, you need to send a letter telling us what the relief is.
Okay, um, I can send a new description. And it would be thirty, it would be, what did I say, forty-five? It would be a forty-five foot relief from the front yard setback, everything else is the same for principal dwelling by connecting the two structures.
Okay, I just want to also, Gina, Gina, just want you to make sure that whatever's on the latest version of the, the survey or the site plan, whatever the document is that has the measurements. Includes all the measurements that you need relief for.
Okay, everything's still the same, I just have to do that one.
Yeah, I mean, ju- just because some of my confusion is that you, you, you have a one acre lot in an acre and a half zone, so is it single and separate? Are you entitled to three tenths, four tenths, like what is the relief we're working from?
Okay, it is single and separate, um, I would have to have the surveyor calculate that.
Yeah, no, I'm just so we know what relief.
No, I wouldn't, that's, it would, I don't have relief to the front yard, it wouldn't be three tenths, four tenths relief. But I will, um, I'll type up a letter. Katie, and, um, instead of asking for relief for an accessory, I will ask for a relief from the principal front yard setback. For the barn.
Whatever it is, whatever it is.
I thought we just need it in writing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's clear.
Okay, I'll take the old description and I'll modify it and I'll send you a letter.
Okay, okay, but also want to mention, very much appreciate your efforts in having the glass corridor be part of this, because that made all the difference, to be honest with you.
Thank you, I really appreciate the board entertaining the application. Um, it to be able to keep this structure, um, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Um, any other questions? Questions for members of the board or Katie?
Nope.
Nope, okay, is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of eighty-five Eastway LLC? This is for property located at eighty-five Eastway Drive in Schenochak Hills. If you're waiting to be heard, please, uh, let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands, okay, then, uh, I have leaned on the application, I would move that we close the public hearing. this evening except for written submissions, and the deadline of written submissions is February twenty-second. So that would be the deadline for anyone who wants to submit written submissions, and then I will have a decision ready on our March fourth meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Feel better.
Thank you.
Mr. Hahn.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mrs. De Sessa.
Hi.
Chair Botsai, thanks again.
Hey, I am number twelve, Susan and Matt Daimler, three Noel Road, Schenochak Hills, Suffolk County, tax map nine hundred two thirty-two, three lots seven point five and seven point six.
Hello, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening. Um, I commend you all for, for your perseverance. This becomes very late, doesn't it? Yes, so, um, this is our third time we've submitted. Um, the first time we were asking for relief of forty-six percent, um, from the twenty, from twenty percent, which is allowed for our rear yard coverage, and we've reduced it, we reduced it for the last submission, and we've reduced it again. And now we're, we're requesting twenty-six percent rear yard lot coverage. It was indicated from the last meeting that if we were under twenty-seven percent, that would be a good thing.
Yes.
So, um, I have, um, moved the tennis, the tennis court, have reduced the tennis court so that we have, um, only seventeen hundred square feet into the rear yard, and I have removed the garage, which is entirely out of the rear yard. Um, so there's, the only thing in the rear yard now is the tennis court. So it gets us to twenty-seven, twenty-six percent. I have, um, two, two questions. When you go to read the definition of rear yard, it does say that, and I understand that I'm a work corner lot and we have two front yards, but since we have to choose one front yard to create a rear yard, um, and the front yard is on Montauk Highway, it's a curious thing to know why we don't get to use our rear yard from lot line, from property line to property line, as is in the definition. And that we only get to take it from property line to the front yard setback of Noel Road. It's, it's not, it's not clear in the definitions, and it's, it, it, I think maybe that, that's how we started off kind of in a, in a, you know, being, it's so large of our lot coverage. So I'm just, I just, I guess I want the definition just to be, um, clarified for, for me, so I don't do this again. This has been a lot of resubmissions, and I, I would like to get it straight the next time I come across a corner lot that I cannot use the rear yard from property line to property line as, as it is defined in the, in the zoning code. So that's, that's one question. And the other question is, um, there is shown a dotted line where, where we could square off the garage, and that if we included that, that, that would be at twenty-eight percent, which is not under the twenty-seven percent, but, um, it would be nice to have. So those are my, my two options. Otherwise, we'll thankfully take the twenty-six percent if we could have it for, uh, as we have it shown.
Okay, all right. Katie or Candace, do you want to comment on the, uh, where, you know, the, well, actually both questions, I think.
Well, I, I get, Candace might be able to. I, I would say you get that clarity from the building department on how to, how to calculate your rear, you know, your rear yard.
I did speak with Dennis O'Rourke, so, so.
Well, he's, yeah, he's the chief building inspector.
Yes. And I was clear, but he did, what I said to him, I, I feel it needs more clarification. He said, well, it's the way we've always done it. I've been doing this for twenty years, so I, I take that as, yep, that's how it is. Um, but I just.
Well, there are some things that are specifically in, in the zoning code, and there are some things, not a lot, but there are some things that are interpretations of the zoning code, you know, really. That is, these, how the, uh, building department treats particular provisions. And so if Dennis says, you know, that they, you know, have X amount of feet in from the lot line, as that's, that's where the measure, where, where it begins in terms of, for, for their purposes, what the rear yard is, then, you know, he may not be able to point to a specific section of the code that's, that, that says that amount of feet, but that's the way they may have interpreted it over the years.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
I do, I do have something to say. Um, but my understanding, since, since I've been with the board, which has been some time now, when you're on the corner lot, so you can't ignore the fact that Noel Road is an actual front yard. So you can't take that corner that she's talking about and call it a front and a rear. It's a front yard, so you actually have to take your front yard setback from Noel Road. You can't count it as your rear yard because it's not a rear yard, it's a front yard.
Well, it, I understand that there's two front yard setbacks, but I guess the question is, is there in fact two front yards? But the answer is obviously yes. Yeah, so, you know, just asking for clarity for that, that's, that's all, so.
Okay, well, and I think
This issue again, because I, I must have read it fifteen times, you know.
And I hope that if you have questions, you know, when you're dealing with other applications in the future, that, you know, you'll know that people in the town will do everything they can to try to answer questions.
Yes, yes, I appreciate that. So now, um, we get back to the matter of the tennis court and the garage.
Yeah, so I just had a question about the tennis court. So I have the, the submission. Um, what is the size of the tennis court now?
It is now a hundred and eight by fifty-five.
Okay. Okay, all right. Well, And that, that includes the back court, correct?
That includes the whole thing, yes. That's, that's the entire, yes. And there's, and it's, we're not asking for any, um, any front yard setback. It's at the fifty-foot, front yard. Um, we're asking for, um, a variance for the garage, which is at forty feet, not a fifty feet.
Okay, and then you had mentioned about the locate, location of the garage and the dotted line, and, yeah. So, you're looking, looking for us to consider.
Another, that adds another, um, two percent, so.
Okay, and, and why, why do you need that?
Um, makes a nicer garage. Um, I don't have, we don't have too many triangular cars, so I, I think, um, it just, it, it makes a more ample garage, that's all. You know, it's, it's cleaner, but.
Okay, I don't know where, uh, the, the rest of my board is, is on that. I don't have an issue with the garage being squared up, but it does look like the house goes over the forty-foot principal front yard setback on Montauk Highway.
No, that's the overhang. The house itself does not. Did you see the dotted line?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Is it more than eighteen inches?
No, it's a twelve, it's a one foot setback, one foot overhang.
Okay, um, I appreciate all the effort that went into this. I, I know it was a lot.
We're, we're in there, you know, we're still at that, trying to, trying to get it. Got a home run here, so we're hoping.
Is, is the garage thirty-five feet wide?
The garage is thirty-five feet wide, yes.
How wide is it in the back?
It is twenty-four in the back.
Isn't, isn't a two-car garage like twenty-two by twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty-four by twenty-four, actually a little more comfortable, yes. Yeah.
So the extra triangle you have is just additional space, so it would make it almost a three-car.
Yeah, it's really additional. I mean, he does, the owner likes to, to, like I said, likes to work on cars, so it, what it does is it gives you two cars and, and room for stuff. I mean, basically your, you know, tools and things like that, so I, I think, e- the two-car garage is sufficient for the cars, yes.
Okay, so.
Looking just for more room to tinker, but we, he can, he can tinker in a triangle if necessary, so it's, you know, we're, we're asking for the other triangle, but it's, it's not crucial for parking.
It's not sounding like you have support for that.
Well, I, I think, you know, we're
Just to chime in, since you can already fit the two cars in there in the garage, I'd be more comfortable with the twenty-six percent plan.
I'm with you, Cornelius.
Adam, um, can I ask, um, Ms. Glazer to address the concerns of the neighbor, Mash Shagru? Did you get her current letter that she sent out on the twenty-first?
No. No.
Have an opportunity to read it and tell me your, how you feel, what your rebuttal statements would be?
Okay, I, I, I never received it, so I don't. Are you gonna put it up, or how?
Adam, you want to read the letter to Ms. Glazer?
Okay, you're talking about the letter from Mae Shugru?
Yes, the one that stated, uh, January twenty-first.
Yes, yes. All right, so here's what we got. I'm writing to you as an owner of fifteen, uh, Mayland Drive, my primary residence, to adamantly object to the requested variance of three Noel Road, the Noel Road property. My property is directly adjacent to the rear yard of the Noel Road property, where the variance is being requested. This letter is in follow-up to my email of November fifth, which is beloved. I am deeply concerned about the impact that this variance would have on my property. I understand that the proposal is to build a tennis or pickleball court and large garage, which together would exceed the twenty percent maximum rear yard coverage permitted under the zoning code. In addition, I understand that the proposed garage is approximately thirty-five percent of the square footage of the house, with a maximum allowed is at or near twenty-five percent. I also understand that the Noel Road property is not the owner's primary residence. The owners reside at a waterfront property on the Schenochak Bay, a half mile away. The proposed plan is tantamount to putting a tennis club in my backyard. It would significantly crowd my property, considerably increase noise levels, and dramatically impinge upon the open space adjacent to my residence. I understand that in determining whether or not very, uh, grant variance, that Ford shall take into consideration the benefit of the applicant as, of the, if the variance is granted, is weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, welfare, and neighborhood or community by such grant, including whether an undesirable change will be produced in the car per the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. In this case, the property benefits essentially a private tennis pickleball facility a half mile away from the owner's primary residence. In no way outweighs the resulting detriment to my property. Moreover, the property variance is not being requested due to hardship, but it is rather a plan that would simply allow the owners to create a tennis slash pickleball facility on a too small lot, which is otherwise prohibited by the zoning code, to the detriment of the use and enjoyment of my home. When I purchased my home, I did so relying on the zoning requirements protecting against intrusive noise and large improvements infringing upon the use and enjoyment of my property. In the absence of a hardship, there's no compelling reason for granting a variance to allow this proposal to move forward. Please feel free to contact me. So that was the comment. Basically, she's opposed, she would like us to deny it.
Where was she to a month ago?
Who had made?
Yeah, and I, and I, and so she indicates that she's an adjacent property owner. Uh, but in any case. What do you, what is, what is your response?
From what I understand, her property is up for sale. Um, I don't know ultimately, you know, how she's, is concerned about her, her welfare when she's not gonna be living there, but maybe she's worried that she won't be able to sell the property because of, because of the tennis court, I don't know. We also got a letter from the property owner on the other side of Noel Road, um, that was sent to us, and I think submitted as well, um, to Candace, that they were, felt no problem about the tennis court, but, you know, a, a, all I can say is they're entitled to their opinion. We, we have complete buffered that area, and I, I honestly don't, the house is way up towards Mayland Drive. There's, there's quite a bit of yard between the two.
No, and, and, and my view is that, you know, based on the revisions that were made, which were substantial, it's just a great deal of effort, that a lot of, you know, effort has been putting into, put into minimizing the impact on the neighbor. Now, the neighbors still may not be happy, I don't know. Um, but in any case, you know, to me, what's being proposed now is pretty consistent with what we have done with other tennis, uh, uh, tennis court applications and other applications dealing with rear yard lot coverage. So, anyway, so that, that's how I see it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep, yep, okay. All right, any other questions, uh, members of the board, Katie?
No.
Okay, if not, is there, is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard, uh, this evening in connection with the application of Daimler? This is the property located at three Noel Road in Schenochak Hills. If you would like to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
Yeah, I did have a hand, but now I don't. Oh, I do.
You do. Okay, good evening. We just can't hear you. We need to, we need you to unmute yourself. We can't hear you. There we go. Good evening. Just have to swear in, if you can state your name and address, please.
Maeve Shagru, fifteen Mayland Drive, Southampton, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay, Maeve, I don't know if you heard, I just read your letter into the record.
I did, and thank you for reading the letter, because that's exactly what I was going to do. And I think my letter states pretty plainly that I don't think this applicant has met the criteria for hardship case and putting in a tennis court on a half acre piece of property and taking up more than twenty percent of the rear lot. And I'm not selling my house. My house is no longer on the market. And I do live here full-time.
Okay, um, so you'd like us to deny the application?
Absolutely.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to tell us?
I know, I think my letter pretty much covered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate you reading it.
Okay.
Because that's exactly what I was going to.
Okay, no problem. We, we read everything that comes in. We just don't always read it into the records. We didn't know you were waiting, so.
And by the way, I did weigh in, in November, and you will see that there, if you read the complete letter, there was a copy of the email that I also sent in November. And just because the architect didn't see it doesn't mean that I didn't, you know, respond. I was at that meeting.
You know, and, and, you know, for what it's worth, you know, you, you, I think you've seen, following this public hearing, that we've, uh, been, you know, the client, the applicant has significantly revised the application
Yes.
Based on your concerns, but concerns of members of this board. And so we're at this point, you know, at a place where we have, uh, a tennis court that is, uh, you know, in terms of its location, the rear yard setback relief is significantly less, much less than it was in the beginning. But I understand, if you're not happy with it, you're not happy with it. Um, but, but we, you know, you know, the, the, our board was, has been concerned about what was proposed.
Right.
And there are a lot of clarification. It's, it's not actually a half an acre, it's point seven of an acre, so it's almost three quarters of an acre. It's a little larger than.
But it's still more than twenty percent.
Yes, right.
And there are codes, and there are bylaws.
Okay, well, you know, I just want to mention one other thing. There could be a conversation that could be had in terms of whether you want to, wh- whether there's anything that the, the applicant's agent could do that might, you know, address some of your concerns. I, I, I don't know, but what I will also tell you is that we're gonna probably close this one and put it on for decision. But if you communicate with, um, Pamela Glazer, um, maybe, uh, there can be some things that can be, uh, addressed, uh, that might, that might alleviate some of your concerns. But I, I know, it really, I get, I get the sense that, that
Well, I think It just has to be less than, you know, it has to be twenty percent or less. And then what is the, the size of the garage versus the size of the house? Doesn't it have to be, the garage has to be some percentage subordinate to the house?
No, when it's attached.
Is it attached with the, that open area in between?
Yes, it's attached with that open area in between.
Oh, so it's not, there's not, there's not Oh, so it's not, there's not, there's not interior heated space to the garage, that's what the plans look like?
There is not.
No.
If we have issues, we, we will do that, but we're hoping to get, you know, with the relief from the, the front yard. I am asking for a front yard setback relief because it's an accessory structure.
I think the building department's gonna have to look at the size.
Well, we, we did raise that, I think we did raise that, um, at one of the hearings, because of Maeve, because of Maeve's letter. Um, but it's worth, you know, it's worth just, just talking about it a little bit now, I mean, it doesn't sound like the board is inclined to let her square it off anyways, which is gonna reduce the size of it.
Right.
Yeah, so it's slightly larger.
Compared to the house?
The garage is, um, 742 square feet, and the house is 2,090 square feet.
It's gonna be, that's like 30%, 32%?
A little under, yeah. I'll tell you exactly how, how much.
Yes. And, you know, isn't there something about hardship and?
There, there, there's, there's a five-part area variance test.
Yes.
Not hard, it is not just hardship, it is not. There, there's a section of the test, and actually, it was funny, last meeting, we had a, uh, someone who was asking about this, there is a self-created hardship section of the area variance test. But that provision of the area variance standard specifically says that we cannot deny a variance based on self-created hardship alone. We can't do that, you have to look, look at the rest of the test.
Right.
And, and do a balancing.
Right.
Yeah, but there isn't like, just hardship as a criteria.
I've read the five.
I, I, I understand.
Yes.
Yep, yep, and we, you know, we're, we're here to, you know, follow the, what, what, what the rules are.
So, another question I have is, there is an issue with drainage on Knoll, directly in front of the house, or directly in front of the property, which I had sent a photograph of, and I have more photographs of at other times of the year. Um, and I would like that issue addressed.
We had to file a, hold harmless agreement with, um, the engineering department, asked us to file a hold harmless agreement, which we did with the county. Um, and that is to deal with the, the fact that there is a drainage issue on Knoll Road, and we will be dealing with the drainage issue on our property. I, I'm very aware of that fact that it, that there's, that's a low point on Knoll Road, and it, it is, so, um, you know, I, there's no drainage, now, there's no drainage on that property as it exists now, but, um, and that, that, without anything being built on that property, that, that, you're gonna always have that problem on Knoll Road, because the county's not gonna repair that.
Right, so, so the property is higher, though, than Knoll Road, so whatever is coming off the property goes to Knoll Road. So if you're putting hard surfaces on that property, how does that?
We're required to retain 100% of our, our storm water and our runoff water on the property, and it will not be drained onto Knoll Road. That, that is, that is a, a code for, uh, the town of Southampton, and.
Yep.
We will honor that 100% because.
Yeah, a- a- and if there's issue of drainage. And if there's an issue with drainage in the future, that is something that is an enforcement issue, this is not something that is before our board, not something that our board, uh, you know, un- unfortunately can res- can, can resolve it itself. Then, a- a- as Pamela said, property owners have to, have to maintain, uh, storm water off, off, within reason, you know, you know, on, on their property. It's not supposed to go off of their property absent, uh, you know, real major hurricane or storm event.
I, I would venture to say that the hill that goes behind your house is one of the biggest runoffs that go onto that area of Knoll Road, which is the low point. So, you're, I, I don't know that you have drywalls at the end of your, at the end of your hill that's retaining your water, so I, you know, I, I, and I'm not saying that you need to go do that, but we will, in fact, retain our water, for sure.
I see.
Yeah.
And if they don't, you call the building department.
Yeah, so we, we are registered with, with the county now, with this whole harmless agreement, so we, we have signed something that says that we will, that we understand that there is a drainage issue at this, at this road.
Unfortunately, it's 9:30, this board doesn't deal with drainage, that's gonna have to be dealt with at the building department level or otherwise. However, there is a concern right now, in my mind, with respect to the size of the detached garage and the house, so I think you need to go to the building department to have that worked out.
Okay, we can do that.
Well, again.
I still have a, I still have a problem with the tennis court, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it, period.
Katie, you want to say, I, I'm a little bit confused, because I.
Sorry, Katie, yeah.
That's okay.
I thought the garage was, was somehow attached, uh, it was, it's not attached?
We have an issue, if we have an issue with that, we, we do have a plan to make it attached.
Okay.
Currently proposed, not attached.
Yeah, you may have to, if it's 35%, you may have.
Well, but wait, again, if, if it's 30, you know, if it's 30, this did, this week, this issue was discussed at one of the public hearings, if it's 35%, this board can render an interpretation that the use of it remains accessory and subordinate. As a two-car garage with, you know, some tinkering area, I mean, I, you know.
Yes.
That's, that's, you know, that's.
You're correct.
And, and like I said, I think we talked about it a little bit, if the board thinks it's too big, you should tell her now, if you want it attached, you should tell her now, um, you know, but 30, 35%, you know, has, has been considered by this board to be accessory, or you can say reduce it to a typical-sized two-car garage.
Yeah, okay, all right, so, so in terms of, uh, this issue, uh, with, with, with the garage, what, what do we wanna do here? Do we want to, uh, have it attached, uh, or do we want to, uh, have it, where we grant relief for its size compared to the interpretation, or do we wanna have it reduced in size?
I'd like to see it reduced in size. Can you reduce it, Pamela?
Well, hold on, hold on Helen, I wanna see where other people are.
I just wanna ask her if she can.
Of course she.
Where the people are, okay?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I don't have as much of a problem with the garage, uh, as I do with the tennis court.
I'm with Mike.
I feel, um, I have a problem with the tennis court and the garage.
Okay.
We're just trying to put too much on this property, I mean, I don't know why you keep coming back, but you're not, you're not convincing me.
I, I was under the impression that the garage was attached, and this was a non-issue, um, and that's one of the reasons why I got so comfortable with the, uh, relief that we were, we're gonna be granting at 26% because I didn't think there was really any, any other relief that we were gonna grant. I mean, I know we've granted garage or accessory structures of that proportion on applications, uh, in the years prior, but coupled with the, um, 26%, I'd prefer it to either be attached or, uh, reduced to a typical two-car garage.
So I, and I'm with Cornelius, I think attaching it is gonna be the, the solution here. But I'm just one, one, one member of the board, you can see there are different people who have different views. All right, so Helen, and, and, and. You, you want to use the garage?
Is there any need, um, for written submissions, I don't see any need for written submissions, I think we're just gonna close the public hearing, and we'll have a decision on March 4th.
Well, we always, you, you know, we're doing all of them for written submissions, February 22nd.
Well, on what issue are they gonna have a written submission?
All applications.
All right, okay.
All applications.
All right.
Written submission.
I'd like to see.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, I just wanted to give, give you some direction here, that, that, that's all.
So you, uh, so the date of February 22nd is the date for written submission, Ms. Glazer?
Okay, so when you, what would be included in the written submission, we know, I know I need a survey, a proper survey, um, and.
Well, if, and if you're gonna be attaching, uh, the garage to the residents, that would be reflected on the survey.
Or reducing the size.
Or reducing the size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all that information in terms of the comments that were made can be addressed in the written submissions. And, and based on that and everything else, you'll have a decision on March 4th.
Second.
Okay, before we, we vote, I just wanna make sure that there's nobody else on the public who's waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Daimler for 3 Knoll Road in Shinnecott Hills.
No, I just wanna make sure that.
No hands.
No hands, okay, I'm sorry, Pamela.
Oh, I just wanna make sure that we know that, you know, we were asked to be below 27%, and we.
Yes.
We did do.
We did what we do, you were, you were asked, and put a lot of effort into it, and I, for one, really appreciate it. Okay, all right, um, so who did the second?
I did.
Okay, um, Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa? Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Sure, but I, uh, thank you all, uh, thank you both for your comments this evening.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, take care.
Yeah, number 13 on the agenda, Stuart Bosky, 703 Flying Point Road, Watermill, tax map 900 178 1, lot 17.8.
Uh, good evening, for the applicant, John Bennett, I, I just quickly note, because I wanna try to run through this quickly, because I think it's a pretty, uh, straightforward case, but, uh, Ms. Glazer was kind enough to compliment you folks on your perseverance, long night and everything, she obviously doesn't know how disgustingly overpaid you guys are to do this stuff, so I'm not gonna give you a compliment like that.
Oh!
We, we so love to hear your comments.
Um, in any event, uh, this was adjourned, uh, for a referral to the planning board, which you have, um, and for the neighbor, giving the neighbor an opportunity to respond, so, uh, the thing that I wanna note about the planning board referral, I'm just gonna keep on banging this home, is that as the planning board says, this doesn't, this, this project, which is what we always call the paper division, because there's a house there already, does not increase density, the house is there. Um, so, th- these are the sort of things that, you know, in, in the old days, I used to see the board grant all the time, uh, and almost on cruise control, the house is there, uh, and, and, and there's no increase in density. Uh, and it's not a guest house, or not a cottage, as, uh, uh, the objectance lawyer says, it's a single-family residence, that's what it's certificated for. So, these things are supposed to be on separate lots, uh, and actually, by granting this relief, uh, you'll be, uh, you'll be eliminating a, a non-conformity. So, um, and, and, and there's no question but that we comply with the character of the neighborhood, this is two, in effect, two neighborhoods, this is the old-time Watermill, which was when I was a kid, it was the old-time Watermill, I know, it's getting to be a long time ago, but all that stuff behind it was farmland. You know, the Quality Farms, it was, uh, you know, Buddy Burnett and Fordune, uh, was all, uh, that had nothing to do with this, uh, Watermill, the character Watermill on Flying Point Road, as we've demonstrated, it is 14 lots, in which the two lots we're creating are, you know, s- the, some of the bigger lots. Uh, so, uh, that, 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 I'll leave that up to you, I think it's pretty logical and pretty obvious that the neighborhood is the neighborhood that fronts on, uh, on, on, on Flying Point Road. Uh, but again, I'm gonna leave that in your, in your good hands, because I think it's, 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 you know, to be consistent with what this board has typically done on paper subdivisions, recognizing the fact that I'm not suggesting any increase in the density, uh, is, uh, i- i- is, is, is pretty, is, is pretty clear. Uh, the other reason that you, you know, the objective talks about this is it was meant to be a guest house, well, actually, that's, that's not true, the existing variance on it allows this house, uh, to, to be, uh, you know, increased up to 4,500 square feet, that ain't no guest house. Um, so essentially, all we're trying to do is to conform to the character of the neighborhood, uh, the other thing, which is just an absolute, and I, I'm hesitant to say this, but it's, it's clear, absolute misrepresentation to the board. The objectance council says that there was an agreement between Mr. Hornig and Mr., uh, my client, Mr. Bosky, that this would not be further subdivided, that's just hogwash. Uh, the objectance lawyer put in a, um, a, uh, operating agreement, yes, uh, Bosky and, uh, Hornig formed an LLC to buy this property, uh, and then they, the purpose was, was to divide it up. But there was no restriction in that agreement, saying that once the property was divided, that Bosky couldn't further subdivide this property. Maybe Mr. Hornig is, is annoyed because the zoning board of appeals on his lot imposed a restriction that it couldn't be subdivided, but specifically didn't put that restriction on this lot, on, on, on the Bosky lot. And I think that's extremely telling, because every, down the road, looking at this, people obviously are gonna say, there's no increase in density, that's sort of like a natural thing to go, so there's absolutely no agreement between Bosky and, uh, Hornig, not to further subdivide this lot, and even if there were, that is of no moment before the zoning board of appeals. Matter of Schwanger, Mumps versus Knowlton, Your Money versus Planning Board of Town, and Huntington, private agreements are not to be taken into account. So if Hornig has a problem with Bosky subdividing this, uh, into two lots that conform to the character of the neighborhood, then he should trot himself over to Supreme Court Suffolk County and try to enforce that agreement. But has nothing to do with your jurisdiction, it's irrelevant, uh, a- 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 and, and by the way, that, that even assumes for the purpose of our argument that there is such an agreement, which is not. That's just an absolute misrepresentation to this board, there's nothing in writing, no, nothing other than a, a organizational agreement, and actually, I'm professionally offended by it, it's nothing more than a misrepresentation, never any agreement whatsoever. Uh, so I, I'm sure, you know, uh, you'll look past that, um, n- 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 nothing whatsoever. Um, again, I'm gonna talk about the staff report, and then I'm gonna move on a little bit, I think the staff report generally, uh, you know, misses the fact that, you know, the mere increase in the intensity of a non-conforming use for somehow, we're gonna increase the intensity of it, that's, that, that's been found not to be, uh, you know, illegal or inappropriate or anything like that. That's the one, uh, uh, thing with the staff report that I take, uh, issue, but there are plenty of houses on this street, even on these very, very small lots we're conforming to, that are the same size as what could be, uh, when this property is further subdivided. The, the thing that is important about the staff report is, is it does something which is obvious, and which I'm very thankful to the planning staff for, which is what it recognizes, is that there's no increase in density. The house is there, to put it on its own lot is you're actually terminating a non-conforming use. So I'll just leave it at that, I don't really have anything else to say, I'll leave it in your board's good hands, I think this case speaks, speaks for itself, it's very consistent with the way, uh, this board has treated these matters in the past. Uh, and I really don't have anything to say other than, uh, you know, just reserve the right to respond to anything else that I see that's been put in the record that is, uh, is, is inaccurate. Unless you have any questions.
Questions?
I, I, John, I, I wanted to quick, just also discuss the secret for this, the planning board report, I know you disagree, but we do, do need to have this conversation on the record. Um, you know, we had, I had initially thought this was a type-two action, I did not recognize that the property is in the agricultural overlay district, the planning board has suggested that it's type-one, um, because it's in chapter 157, um, and they're recommending, I mean, type ones, we have to coordinate, we have to do lead agency, I, you know, I just want you to respond to that, because I know that you do disagree.
Yeah, I, I, I think the secret regs talk about one, two, and three family residences, uh, as being, uh, you know, type-two actions and variances of the like for that as being type-two actions, but I'm gonna be very, very direct with you. That's an argument that I've been having for 20 years, and the planning staff doesn't seem to care, so, we'll get you an EAF, uh, you know, I don't wanna waste time.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, having the argument, because, uh, what am I gonna say to you, I'll get you the EAF.
Thank you, I appre- I appreciate that, and that's, like I said, that's also consistent with another two-lot subdivision we have in the agricultural overlay district, so thank you.
You know, I don't know, I don't know, I, I, I don't know how, how anybody could have anything other than a negative deck on a situation where it's a paper subdivision, uh, and I've got the house exists, or the impact on the environment is not met by what the, as the commentators say, seeker's broader concerns, but I understand the secret is both a substantive and a procedural law, uh, I don't, I don't want us to waste time fighting about it, we'll get you, we'll get you an EAF, and, and, and you'll do, you'll do the secret.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, jump.
Uh, I'd like to share my screen.
Sure.
Um.
Yeah, um, I'm going to put aside some of the characterizations that John made and just get into it, which is that we feel it's not a paper subdivision. It's, it's a subdivision of a lot that was created. The, the two lots that he's proposing are significantly smaller than an R eighty lot, which this is zoned for. It's contrary to the two thousand six and twenty fifteen ZBA decisions, which we obviously read differently than John. And then finally, we do think it's out of keeping with the character of the neighborhood, because most of the lots created from nineteen eighty forward are, are eighty or larger. The original deal was that there were three lots, and the applicant and the neighbors got together and agreed to, to buy the lot between them and split it, one third, two thirds, which was approved by the two thousand six decision. The lot that they divided, if you see where the arrow is, it was lot six in the Quality Farm subdivision.
Actually, not sure.
Yeah, hold on, Joan, you gotta put your, you have to share a screen.
I am sharing my screen.
Well, we're not.
Seeing it, yeah.
You don't see it.
Let me go back to Zoom. Share screen.
There you go.
Here we go.
Okay, so the variances are substantial, um, which I already reviewed with you. They are significantly smaller than the R eighty lot zone, with this lot is zoned for. It was originally three lots, the Boski's lots, the, the Hornigs, and the one in between them was lot six of the quali- the nineteen eighty eight Quality Farm subdivision plat, which they agreed to divide one third, two third. And then they agreed to go forward with a lot line modification application, which was the subject of the two thousand six CBA decision. This is the Quality Farm subdivision plat. Um, if what you can see where the arrow's pointing, this area is, is lot six, which they divided between the Hornigs, which is over here on the, on this side, and Boski's, which is on the other side. And this is the way they divided it. This, this whole area was Quality Farm lot six. They took a third and put it over on Boski's property, and they put two thirds over on the Hornigs property, which meant the Hornigs property was almost four acres. It, it created, um, uh, Boski's property had one point seven acres. Now, this is the, this is the language of the agreement that I quoted in my letter. I, I'd like to just highlight a couple of points, because I feel that, um, Mr. Bennett sort of mischaracterized some of what I had written, um, or what I had quoted. They agreed that each would increase the property owned by the other. And then they went on to say, if they couldn't, if they couldn't accomplish this through a legal lot line modification, they would enter into reciprocal long-term leases for the use and occupation of the same percentage areas that they divided off and added to their properties. Now, I want to emphasize that the agreement talks about increasing the land owned by Stuart Boski. If he's dividing the property, he would no longer be owning it. And that was not the intent of the agreement.
But, but, but Joan, if this is a private agreement?
Mr. Bennett, I'm Mr. Bennett. You had your chance to speak.
I'm not speaking.
Okay.
Joan?
Yes.
This is a private agreement. That is not something that our board.
No, I under- I understand, but I just want to give you some of the background.
I object to the introduction of it.
I just want to give you some of the background.
It's meaningless anyway, but why?
It was the subject, it was the subject of a two thousand six CBA decision.
No, it wasn't.
Tax law.
Hold on, hold on.
Help me, please.
Joan, let, Joan should be able to make a presentation.
It was a private agreement, and she's going to prattle on about it. It has nothing to do with your jurisdiction. You shouldn't be entertaining it.
Well, I'm going to let Joan finish her presentation.
So the, the resulting tax line modification shows, again, this is lot, lot six of Quality Farm, the way that it was divided, with the dotted line area going to the Hornigs property, and this dotted line area going over to Boski's property. So the two thousand six decision noted that there were certain nonconformities in the three lots, which were eliminated or reduced, and that by enlarging Boski's property, it would become nonconforming. Now, Mr. Bennett has made a point of saying that the decision said that it wouldn't, couldn't be further subdivided. There was really no need for the board to say that at the time, because they were commenting that it was nearly, nearly, it would, it was becoming less nonconforming, because it was still not within the full, fullness of an R eighty zone property. So if you were to subdivide these properties, you would make it even more nonconforming, as opposed to less nonconforming. In the two thousand sixteen decision of the ZBA, Boski proposed putting a tennis court where the arrow is. Um, this would be the existing two-story house. And it's my understanding, I understand Mr. Bennett has a different interpretation that, and if you read some of the, if you could read the text, which you can't, the existing two-story house was to become a guest house and pool house, and you can see the pool area was here. There would have been no reason to put a pool here and a tennis court there, and then subdivide the properties. So, I'd like to talk now about how you define the neighborhood. We believe that the neighborhood is bigger than the fourteen little lots, eight of which are pre-zoning. If you look at the nineteen eighty eight Quality Farm subdivision, the average acreage was one point nine nine acres across twelve lots. If you combine Quality Farm and the nineteen eighty one Ford Dune subdivisions, the average is two-point acres across thirty lots. So just to anticipate some of John's arguments, I included some additional properties that are on Flying Point Road, and I still came up with a hundred and six, hundred and six thousand four hundred and eighty-six square foot lots, or two point four acres, and that was in exhibit J. I don't believe that the applicant's fourteen properties properly constitute a neighborhood of the present. Now, I'm talking about the present. What John wants you to do is to go backwards in time, I think, and not look at what's been created. This is the, this is what can properly be considered the neighborhood, not these couple of little lots that were grandfathered. I mean, if you're going to stay with an R eighty zoning, then stay with an R eighty zoning. Don't go backwards. It's not a paper subdivision. This is another way to look at the property. Um, it didn't really come out on the PowerPoint, but hopefully it came out in the exhibit. The, the red numbers are the numbers that I analyzed in the chart on exhibit J, and I provided surveys for, for thirty-one of the thirty-three properties. So just to summarize, I believe that the, the variances are substantial, and that, um, to grant them would be contrary to, certainly to the two thousand six decision, and I submit to the twenty fifteen decision. And it's contrary to the character of the neighborhood, as it presently stands, which are lots that are in keeping with or larger than R eighty zoning.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would, who would like to be heard? But before I, uh, ask that, are there any questions of, of Joan from members of the board or Katie? Okay, all right. Is there anyone, uh, from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Boski? This is for seven oh three Flying Point Road in Watermill. If you would like to be heard, this would be the time to raise your hand to let us know.
No hands, Adam.
No hands. Okay, all right.
Adam, uh, it's Anthony. Uh, can I just, uh, quickly go through the planning board's, uh, recommendations?
Of, of course.
I'm going to need to share the screen. Um, okay, thanks. I'll be very, very brief, because I think you guys, uh, got the, um, uh, obviously, it's a two lot subdivision. Uh, as far as the planning board could see through the review of the records, there's two, uh, single family residences on the property. The planning board's, uh, position, um, is that there is no increase in density. Uh, yes, the planning board is acknowledging, uh, that the redevelopment does increase the size of the residence and increase therefore the intensity of the use. Uh, they would be remiss if they didn't point it out, but they are acknowledging that there is no increase in density. So the planning board wanted to state that right from the get-go. Uh, normally, we do a pre-application, which would serve as the comments to the ZBA, uh, but we didn't, uh, have a pre-application in this case. The planning board, um, basically had concern about the driveway, and this is something we could address during the subdivision. The way it's sort of designed, uh, shows sort of a shared parking area, I guess, between these two properties. Um, we don't have any objections to a common driveway, but a common driveway, uh, typically goes down the middle, and then, you know, provides access to one garage or residence, and then to another. Uh, we typically wouldn't support, uh, parking lot in the front of the property, uh, or they could maintain the two existing driveways that are there. Uh, the planning board didn't have any objections to that. The other issue was that it's, the property's in the high priority, uh, water quality improvement zone. Uh, so the planning board would like to see the installation of, uh, the innovative wastewater treatment for both lots. Uh, obviously, there's going to be a new residence on one of the lots, so that will, uh, trigger it. Um, and the existing residents on the other lots, uh, this actually may be a requirement of the health department, uh, but that, that was an issue the planning board would like to see addressed. The demolition of the existing residence is obviously, uh, it was marked in the, uh, town's records that it has to go to landmarks and historic districts board. Um, so I'm not sure if you had any, if they had any comments to you, but any demolition of that structure, uh, has to go before the landmarks. Uh, and the planning board points out that even though it may not be a designated historic structure under state or federal guidelines, uh, it is historic, uh, in that it's, uh, the vernacular of the neighborhood, uh, and that there may be opportunities, uh, to preserve the architectural integrity of the building, so we like to identify those programs. Uh, again, these are largely planning issues. Uh, and then again, as John said, we, we indicate that this is a type one action, uh, subject to a coordinated secret review. So that was basically all the planning board had, uh, on this one. If you had any questions?
Thank you, Anthony.
Sure.
Jake, comments? Okay. John, I want to give you an opportunity to respond.
Yeah, if, I'll, very quick, uh, we have no problem with the IA systems, uh, on both, uh, even retrofitting that as part of the, uh, a, a condition, uh, retrofitting the, the existing larger house, uh, and of course, the new one. No problem whatsoever, and that's sort of ice in the winter, because we're going to have to do, the health department is going to make us do that anyway. We, so it's not so magnanimous, but we would have no problem with that as a condition. Um, we, we have Bob Smith taking that circular driveway off. So we'll re-submit that. Just two quick questions in response to, uh, Joan. Uh, to say that there was no need for the zoning board of appeals to prohibit subdivision, uh, on the Boski lot ignores the fact that they specifically said so on the Hornig lot. So I don't know where, where, where she's going with that, number one. Uh, and number two, whether or not lots predate zoning or not, I always find this interesting. It doesn't matter. It's the character of the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood is, is, is determined by pre-existing lots and whatever the lots are, whether or not they predate zoning or not. So, you know, that's, that's what the whole body of case law on pre-existing, uh, uh, neighborhoods are. A lot of them don't conform with the zoning. Sort of scratching my head, uh, you know, most of the lot, most of the, uh, i- the zoning stuff in this, uh, when you have a situation like this, where you have, rezonings are supposed to uh, follow existing development patterns. You see this all over in North Sea and in Nyack. There are pockets where you have on the road, uh, small lots, pre-existing lots, and then behind it, you got three and five acre lots, and those pockets are zoned R ten, R fifteen, R twenty. That probably should have been done, done here, but I'm not going to make that argument to the town board. Uh, but what I'm asking you to do is to utilize a, a, a long-established body of your own precedent and your own case law, and allow this, uh, to be, this lot to be, this paper division to go forward. That's, that's all I have now. I think we have some secret issues, so I would ask you to adjourn it, I, and we'll submit an EAF, and I guess you guys are going to coordinate, and I think you have to wait until the planning board uh, issues a, uh, determination of significance to, uh, to, 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 uh, give a decision then. Would, would that be right, Katie?
I, I just would like to underscore that this is in an R eighty zone. And to, to separate it is to go backwards. It clearly was set up as an R eighty zone, and the, the overwhelming majority of properties in the area, including the ones along Flying Point Road, which I included in my exhibit, are overwhelmingly R eighty compliant or larger, and also have larger road widths, and, I mean, widths at the road.
Okay, so Anthony, what, what I was thinking, and you tell me if this is, um, this would work. We have to, we have to coordinate secret. John's going to give us a long form EAF, thirty days for lead agency, so I was thinking, um, the ZBA could do a lead agency resolution on March fourth, because that's, you know, with, beyond the thirty days with our meetings. And then do you think, do you think that we would be able to get, you know, a secret determination by the eighteenth, if we do lead agency on the fourth? That's enough time, right?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, off the top of my head, know the meeting schedule, but yes, that, that shouldn't be a problem at all. You know, the other side of it is that the planning board is comfortable, they could simply relinquish this, you know, and then the zoning board would be able to take lead agency and do the secret determination on the same evening. That's, those are the two options. I, I can't speak to that, because I, that's a board, that, you know, planning board's got to relinquish it, but that is one of the options. But I think the timeframe works.
Okay, and we, we did keep it on BH six eighty, so maybe when we coordinate, you know, now that we have you with us at our meetings, um, you know, we'll say that we want to keep it. Does the board feel okay with that? Yes, no?
I think having Anthony here, you know, that helps do that. So if the board's comfortable with that, I think that's helpful in terms of the process.
Yes.
All right. All right. So let's, let's do that. Let's, um, let's coordinate secret, put a lead agency resolution on, um, for March fourth. And then, do you want to, well, let's, let's try to do secret, let's try to, you know, keep the public hearing open for that. John, do you want to do it that meeting, or do you want to wait till the eighteen?
No, we do it then. That's fine. We'll, we'll just, we'll, we'll, we'll work hard.
So adjourn for all purposes till March fourth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, however, Brian, you are the lead on this application. Would you like to take that motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
Sorry.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Joe, but I, thank you both for your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, John, you're sticking around, but, uh, Joan, have a good rest of your night.
Yay.
Sticking around.
Oh, you are.
Item fourteen, application of Eric Moskylitis, property of fifty, fifty-one Bob White Drive, Watermill, tax map nine hundred sixty-four three, lot twelve point eight. It's a holdover.
For the applicant, John Bennett, uh, this was adjourned, uh, the neighbor, uh, Mr. Cohen, uh, had, uh, had some comments, and, and we, over the, since the meeting was adjourned, I, I spent an awful lot of time on the phone, uh, with Mr. Cohen, and, uh, it was very gentlemanly, uh, conversations, and, uh, he, Mr. Cohen wanted a landscape plan. We had LaGuardia Design, uh, create a landscape plan, which has been submitted. Uh, Mr. Cohen also wanted to see a lighting plan, because he was concerned about, despite the fact that I told him we'd have to comply with the dark skies law, uh, he was, wanted to see. he wanted to see what kind of lighting was gonna take place on these properties. I do want to say, and Mr. Cohen is probably on, and he'll tell you one way or the other whether or not he agrees with this, but he was very complimentary of the architecture, which Stella Lamont and Ronnie appreciated. But we did submit a lighting plan, which essentially shows some perimeter lighting and some walkway lighting, all down-facing lighting. I guess during the construction of the house, because of the strain, of the topography, you know, there's some rolling moraine areas. Some of the construction involved vibrating in sheet piles, which is usually what happens when you have some of these issues with topography. Mr. Cohen wanted to make sure that none of that was gonna happen during the construction of these accessory structures. And I assured him, because it's a flat surface, we're actually, we're actually gonna, we're gonna abandon the tennis court. It's very flat. So it would be just traditional excavation. No sheet piles being driven into the ground. You could make that a condition. He was concerned because the vibrations were being transmitted, he felt, to his house and had some negative effects. So we, no sheet piles being vibrated into the ground. Very traditional excavation. We gave, and Mr. Boski wanted someone who he could call during the construction if he had concerns. I volunteered that he could call me. I would just ask Mr. Boski if he's listening.
You mean, Mr. Cohen?
I'm Boski. Fairly. But in any event, but certainly, you know, open channels here. So I will tell you, though, that I think Mr. Boski has something to say. I mean, Mr. Cohen, excuse me, Mr. Cohen has something to say, but I don't know that he's satisfied with the landscape plan. But, you know, I told him that he should make his concerns about the landscape plan known to the board. And the, and the board will make that decision. We felt that our landscaping plan was more than adequate, particularly in light of the fact that this is in an area, you know, it's up in the moraine area. It's, there are significant clearing restrictions. So there's, you know, there's also, there's naturally occurring buffer in that entire area, but I sent the board to make the decision on that. So I think, I could be wrong, and Mr. Boski will let you know. But I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen will let you know. My apologies. It's late, I'm confusing applications. Mr. Cohen will let you know. I think, I think he's okay with the lighting plan, but he'll let you know that. I think he liked the architecture, but he'll let you know that. We said we wouldn't do any unorthodox excavation. We have a planting plan that I'm not sure Mr. Cohen is satisfied with, but we did spend an awful lot of trying, time trying to get to agreement with the neighbor. The other neighbor, Dr. Fine, put in a letter of support. I think I presented the case. The only thing he wanted me to do, the last time, he wanted to see if I could come to some sort of agreement with the neighbor, Mr. Cohen. And I, we did as much as we could.
Okay, I appreciate your efforts on that, John. Okay. Any questions of John, members of the board, or Katie?
The only thing I did want to add in terms of percentage, well, it's a huge lot. So it's not like we're asking for this 40-some-odd percentage on a lot that's a small lot. This is a, you know, this is almost twice zoning. What is it, about eight acres? Well, you know, a little bit, almost, not quite. I'm cheating a little bit because it's probably a, yeah, but it's almost twice zoning, so. Anyway, I'd hope you'd keep that into consideration. And clearly, these are accessories. But in any event, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, very good. So I just want to ask if there is anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening?
Yes.
There is, okay. All right.
Niles.
Yes. What am I doing here wrong?
Okay.
Put the video on.
There we go.
So I'm sorry.
Okay.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. I'm not sure if I previously swore you in.
You previously did.
I did, okay, that's fine. We have, say your name again and tell us your comments.
Niles Cohen, I'm the neighbor on the west side of the property at 16 Watermill Heights Drive. Mr. Bennett has been very nice to have provided me with these plans. Unfortunately, I got some of them late and there was some miscommunication between Mr. Bennett and I. So we just spoke about an hour before this meeting where I did learn the, his client's response to some of the things I had to say. My, I do compliment the architecture and design. I think it's, it looks wonderful. I had a little trouble interpreting the lighting scheme. I'm told all the lights are downward facing. The property, the proposed structures will be below me, so it shouldn't affect me too much. The structures of almost 4,800 feet combined extend approximately 110 feet, I believe. So we're talking about 110 feet of structure along the west side of the tennis court. And the proposed, and that's what I see. I see the west side of the, of the proposed structures, not so much the south side. And that's because of the topography mostly hides the south side. And I am to the west of the proposed structures. So in the proposed planting schedule that was provided to me, there were 11 American holly and white pines, all on the south side of the property, which, and I explained to Mr. Bennett that really that serves no purpose in shielding this 110 feet of structure, of structures. So I had asked for some shielding on the west side of the building, either along the property line. There's a deer fence along the property line, which is higher than the, than the proposed structures, which I think would make it easier, although that's in the woods. So I don't know if you can really plant there effectively. Or just to the west, you know, along the line of the tennis court. So, you know, if he would move the trees that he proposed on the south side, which served no purpose to me, I don't know what benefit he gets from it. But if he would move them to the west, I think that would go a long way in making it more appealing to me. That's, that's all I have to say on that. I also did learn today, because I didn't see it, it was in very small print, that there's actually gonna be a car wash in the structure. I don't know if you guys caught that. But there's a four-car parking garage and then a car wash next to it. And since we are on Wellwater here, I had a concern. I don't know really how to vet that concern. I assume the Suffolk County Health Department.
Anything like that would have to meet the Health Department's standards, which requires only recycled water. So, you know, you can make that a condition. I don't care. That's, that would just be a condition that we would be required to conform with the law.
Okay. I, you know, I guess that's all I can ask, that you conform with the law on that. But I would hope it would be recycled water. I don't know what chemicals go into washing cars and we're pretty close. I don't know how the water tables work, but I don't want to be drinking his car wash.
And Niles, we don't have an application for relief for a car wash used on the property. So I really don't know how we can address it in any other way. Okay, do you understand what I'm saying?
I think so, but it's in the plan.
I understand, but we're here with a variance application.
Okay.
Okay, there will be other, you know, entities that will be reviewing.
Okay.
We're all a sudden done, everything that occurs, including the building department. So if that needs to be addressed, it will be addressed there. It would not be something we would have any say over.
Okay, I understand. So really, you know, I think it's a tasteful building. If, you know, if you guys are comfortable with it, I'm not asking to stop the building of it. I would just, if possible, get some trees, evergreen-type trees planted on the west side of the property to at least break up this massive structure. I rest there, I won't take any more of your time, it's late.
Okay, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so John, it sounds like there's been productive discussion that's taking place.
Yeah, very much. Mr. Cohen was a real gentleman. We played a lot of telephone tag, but that's because I guess we're both busy. But no, it was, it was very, very productive. Yeah, well, I'll tell LaGuardia your concerns and, you know, if it's just a question of shifting the location of the vegetation to better protect you, who could complain about that?
Okay. Appreciate that.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate you being so reasonable, Mr. Cohen. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone else who is waiting to be heard? This is in connection of the application of the Eric Moskylitis, beneficiary of your evocable trust. This is for 51 Bob White Drive in Watermill. If you would like to be heard, please let us know by raising your hand. This will be the time.
No hands.
No other hands, okay. All right, otherwise, Mike, it's yours.
Okay. So I would think that we will close the public hearing on this matter and accept written submissions up until February 22nd with a decision on March 4th.
And I'll get, in that, and well before that, I'll get those plans to Mr. Cohen so he can look at them.
Thank you.
Second.
And if it turns out that there is more that is agreed upon between, John, between you and Mr. Cohen, they'll let us know. But it sounds to me like it's going in a good direction.
I think so.
Okay. Who made the second?
I did.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Hahn.
Hey.
Mr. De Sessa.
Hi.
Your votes are aye. Thank you both for your comments this evening.
You.
Okay, Charles, before we start, go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, before we start, do we want to take a short break? No, in favor of another two hours?
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes, yes.
One more.
Just for the record, Brian De Sessa recusing myself on next application, so I will see you all at the next meeting.
The next one.
Okay, have a good night, Brian.
What, Helen, what are you wearing, diapers or something?
Oh, no, just.
Helen, you want us all just, you know, just go on and not go to the bathroom? Okay.
No.
Well, that's what you're asking. Okay.
Gavel, gavel.
All right, a short break.
On the agenda, River Rock Structured Capital LLC for a property located at 186 Crescent Avenue, Watermill, tax map 90115, one lot eight.
For the applicant, John Bennett, this, there was a decision on this matter and then a lawsuit was commenced by some of the neighbors. And one of the claims in the lawsuit is that this matter should have been referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. I've answered that, I've answered that allegation to this board and I've answered the allegation in the Suffolk County Supreme Court. I think it's quite clear, the way I read the intergovernmental agreement, that there was no referral necessary. And that was not an admission. I think the board has been clear that that's not, not, their decision to refer was not an admission. Sorry, I certainly don't see it. But be that as it may, the board decided, I guess, from a belt and suspenders point of view, do, actually do the referral. Now, the position of the neighbors, some of the neighbors, not all of them, by the way, but some of the neighbors, in their papers, that it's inappropriate for the board to consider the matter until the Suffolk County Planning Commission has chimed in. So assuming for the purposes of argument, assuming arguendo, that's the case, which I disagree with, but assuming arguendo, that's the case. And there's really, my position would be there's really nothing to do here this evening. The Planning Commission considered it, adjourned it. It's on for the 3rd of February, at which point presumably the Planning Commission will either issue a finding that the matter is for local determination or make, impose some conditions, at which case you'll consider those and either override them or agree with them. So I, you know, I don't know what we're doing other than adjourning this thing until after the, after the 3rd, 11th. I think is the next meeting, is the 7th, the February 7th? I would really, really, really like to have this on, the meeting after the 3rd, and proceed from there. But taking any testimony tonight on this would be inconsistent, I would think, with some of the neighbors' concerns about the alleged lack of any required Planning Commission referral.
I don't know if there's any, I don't really have anything else to say other than, may have some words in response if Ms. McGivern wants to do anything but that.
Okay.
Hey, Adam, you want to see if anyone's here?
Sure. So is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard in connection with the application of River Rock Structured Capital LLC? This is for property located at 186 Crescent Avenue in Watermill. If you would like to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
Joan, you're muted. Joan is muted.
Okay.
Yeah, can you?
Yeah.
Sorry, so the commission staff did accept the referral, acknowledging that it, or in their view, that it involved some, a matter of county-wide significance, being that it was on Mecocks Bay, and they issued a report. I'm gonna share my screen. There were a couple of points they made in their report that are.
Wait, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. This commission's, the staff report is not the action of the Planning Commission, so I'd object to that. And I also want to take at this time the opportunity to state that Ms. McGivern is in her firm or appearing before the Planning Commission in absolute violation of the Suffolk County revolving door law. Ms. McGivern, less than two years ago, sat on that Planning Commission. So this is just over the top. The staff report has absolutely no bearing before, on this board. The staff report is not the action of the commission, it's the commission vote. So please.
But, John, I'm gonna let Joan continue, okay?
I just wanted to bring the staff report conclusion to your attention. If I can share my screen.
I'm gonna object to this again. This is, you know what, come on, there are rules.
So just to summarize some of their, their comments, which we put in the letter to you, I'll just go to their ultimate conclusion or recommendation to the board, which was to recommend disapproving the five variances for the carriage house because they felt the carriage house constituted an unwarranted over-intensification of the use of the premises and would tend to undermine the effectiveness of the zoning ordinance, would tend to establish an undesirable precedent for such land development patterns throughout the coastal shoreline of town of Southampton.
This is a recommendation, this isn't the action of the board.
Correct, correct.
It's a staff recommendation.
It's a staff report.
Yep.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna renew my serious objection to this. That entire process to this date has been tainted by the fact that Ms. McGivern is in unquestioned violation of the Suffolk County planning, of the Suffolk County revolving door law. Less than two years ago, she was a member of that commission and she was not supposed to be appearing before that commission.
I didn't appear before them.
Yet, you know what, who did? If you're gonna tell me, your partner. If you're going to tell me your partner, you are your partner or another member of your law firm for conflicts purposes. That's basic. So just because, just because David Dubin trotted in there, he's, you're in the same law firm, you have the same ethical problem. So the, that entire proceedings has been tainted. I put that in my, in, in, in my papers to the judge. And I also put it in my papers to the planning commission. And you should ignore this entire thing because the staff report is irrelevant. It's the action of the planning commission. So they're going to act presumably on the third. They're going to either, the planning commission, not the staff, who's been tainted. The planning commission is going to act on the third. And they're going to either make it for local determination or with, with conditions. And I would ask you to put it on respectfully for the meeting after that.
So we're going to, we're going to have it on our agenda for first meeting in February.
Thank you.
What's that date?
So the date is.
February four.
February fourth.
That's the same date that the planning commission is meeting.
Day after.
The day after.
The day after, okay. So we, we should have a, a response? We should have something from them by then?
Yes.
We're hoping, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, I think I would lead way back when on this one.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So I would move that we adjourn the application of River Rock Structured Capital LLC for all purposes until our February fourth meeting.
Second.
Mr. Hahn.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Daley. Chair of the side, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gana.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, so I think we're otherwise, we did the decisions already. So I think we're otherwise, if there's anything else, motion to close?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're closed.
Night, everybody.
Thank you, Katie, thank you, Candace.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.